Yeah, we're ready. Okay, good evening, everyone. Calling to order the June 6, 2023, meeting of the Select Board. This is of our new board. This is our first meeting here in person, so I look forward to that. The first item on the agenda is public comment. And we have a public comment section at the beginning, at the end of our agenda this evening. And public comment is for, if anyone wishes to speak or ask a question. I know Ms. Brascio is very familiar with this process. An item which is not on the agenda. Please let us know if you wish to speak. And Ms. Brascio, I'm going to recognize you.
Awesome, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, sorry, Lisa Brascio, 13 Oregon Road. I should have known that right off the bat. I just wanted to take a second to acknowledge a passing that we had here in town. On May 16th, it was our oldest resident, Virginia Almonte. She was, in 1943, she was one of the first women to enlist in the newly formed Women's Marine Corps. She served her country well through World War II and through the 1950s and early 60s, and retired with the rank of Gunnery Sergeant after more than 20 years of service. Her time included working for the Undersecretary of the Navy in both the Eisenhower and Kennedy administrations. She also served overseas in the 1960s at the NATO headquarters in Naples, Italy. So I just thought I would take a second and acknowledge someone that had a pretty spectacular life, obviously left an amazing legacy, and offer condolences on behalf of the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have a public comment? Seeing none, the first item on our agenda is a presentation from Ferris Development Group. And with us is Mike Ferris from Ferris Development Group. So if you'd like to come forward, sir, and sit, you can bring up a chair and use the microphone there. Super. So first, why don't you introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do and what brings you here this evening? That would be great.
Thank you. Michael Ferris, former resident of Southborough for 45 years. Live in Westminster now. I work for my brother's company, Ferris Development Group. I'm in charge of being coordinated with this initiative for him with these 40B apartment buildings.
Could I just interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
Because I recognize we also have the Planning Board here, and I forgot to ask Ms. Lutrell if you'd like to call your meeting to order as well.
I'd like to call our meeting to order. I know Marty is on the chair. Jesse is here. So we called the Planning Board to order. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for that interruption.
Sure. So I'm leading an initiative for Ferris Development Group. We specialize in commercial and residential real estate development. As maybe some of you know, Dave owns some properties along Route 9, some buildings, 250 Turnpike, 120, 118 Turnpike, some in Westborough as well. And as part of that, we've identified on two properties that he has, 120 Turnpike and 250 Turnpike, where we have both commercial and residential land on those properties. And we've been exploring what we could possibly do with the residential pieces. As you know, we're building a self-storage at 250 Turnpike right now. So I've put together a team over the winter of civil engineer, architects, and mass housing expert to help us with filing the proper, proper type of filing of, for site eligibility for both 120 and 250 Turnpike. So we're in that preliminary stage right now, where we had an initial discussion with the state, and the state said, when we're ready to file, we should socialize that with the town. And so that we're not just, you know, you're not getting word of that just directly from Mass Housing. So, you know, I could walk through the sites here a little bit? Sure. So just for people that might not know what Chapter 40 is, it's a comprehensive permit. It provides and enables local zoning boards to approve affordable housing. And whether, whether you rent apartments or you turn them into condos, there's a long-term, 20% to 25% of those units have to be affordable. And affordable is getting pretty expensive these days. You know, most of our town officials that work in our, you know, town offices could probably qualify for affordable housing, you know. So they give you guidance and how to resolve conflicts. And there's also Friendly 40B, too, where, you know, there are some local initiatives and, you know, master planning things where a town can get behind and support certain sites that might make sense based on, you know, some of the land characteristics. Next up, so we talked about who Ferris Development is. So, real quickly, 120 Turnpike is a proposed 56-unit apartment building. And we'll talk about the site in a second. The other one is 250 Turnpike, is a proposed 60-unit apartment building. So we think of it as a good benefit for the town to control municipal growth in 40B in a way where our sites are smaller 60-unit type of locations. We're not talking about putting down 300, 500 homes, you know, type of development. Another benefit is that both of our sites have direct access to Route 9. We already have the curb cuts and the access points to both these locations on Route 9. So we don't anticipate needing any access on the local roads for either of these sites. And the other thing is, especially 120, minimal impact to a butter. So 120, we'll cover it in the site, but I think 820 feet away is the closest home. And, and so, you know, we also, from a traffic and a stormwater management perspective, we've already been working with the town and Concom at 250 over the last year anyways. So we've been closely working together. So as far as site eligibility processes, this is what my, I call her our Sherpa. She, she, she's walking us through this part of the process. And, you know, so we're meeting with you tonight. And then we intend to submit these, a little bit staggered, but pretty much back-to-back, where the process is that it goes for a Mass Housing site approval application. And then they come and they visit with the site, and they determine an eligibility or not ineligible. And then from that point, we would work with the town and file a ZBA comprehensive permit request. So that's kind of the timeline we're looking at right here. And, next slide, please. So just a real quick overview, there's a lot of, I provided all the architectural renderings and site plans in digital format for everybody. I think they're on my Southborough already. And, but real quickly, on 120 Turnpike, we're proposing four-story apartment building, 56 units, very thoughtfully designed approach, more modern feel to it. But from that site, we'll be 1,200 feet off of Route 9, and it's all in residential A zoning. And if you're familiar with 118, 120 area, there's the Veristat Building that's kind of in the back. We're kind of right in line with that, but tucked in behind our existing 120 building. So it's, it's a nice location from that. And it also has deceleration and acceleration lanes on Route 9 in that, in that location. And then Mass Housing dictates the certain types of mix of apartments and sizes that, so this would be the mix for 120 Turnpike. And so if you could, next slide, please. So on 250 Turnpike, there's an upper site and a lower site at 250, where the upper site is now being changed to use into a self-storage facility. And the lower site is really where all the corporate parking was for years. And what we're proposing is actually a shared easement access driveway right onto Route 9, where we do own property on Parkerville Road, but we don't anticipate and see a need to, to impact local traffic there in any way when we can get right out to Route 9 directly. And those, that's already approved by the state. And so, again, similar concept, it's 56 units. It's a little closer to Route 9, and a number of one bedrooms and two bedrooms with some three bedrooms. And so that's the summary of 250. Here's a kind of rendering. There's two different renderings you can see for each site. I provided all the PDFs and I printed, I think, Mark, you might had a copy delivered to you today, right? And so the other thing, if, next slide, please. So they're really actually pretty nice apartments. They, they have an office for at-home work. They have kitchen islands. We designed it so that the mechanicals are all accessible from the hallway so that, you know, the buildings can be maintained more effectively. It's onsite septic and town water. And we're looking at electric as, as our planned power for the building and planning for, you know, the ability to tie in solar requirements if things change in the building permit codes. So that's kind of a quick summary. Our next steps are to go through that site eligibility. And once we have that determination, we would like to come back and work with the town and have more thoughtful discussions about, you know, how to potentially approve a comprehensive permit.
That be coming back to the Zoning Board of Appeals or to the Select Board or?
I think, I think it comes technically to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yeah.
But we want to get town support, right? We're a long-term resident here as well. And, you know, we want to do things that's smart development for the community. And we think these sites have a unique aspect to them that don't impact a lot of local roads and things like that because of their proximity to Route 9.
And could you speak to, on the CAS site, what's the current status of? I believe that building was going to be, is being rehabbed to be a self-storage facility? Is that right or?
Yes.
Okay. Where does that, where does that stand in that process?
We're a little behind on our construction there. We, we have to, we have to reinforce the steel in the building. And so we've been doing some massive work over the winter. We're getting very close. So I think we're doing a company launch of a new concept that you'll hear more about. But I think it'll be opening in the fall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Why don't we just go down this way, Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you very much. Couple of quick questions. My quick back-of-the-envelope calculation says that there's essentially 55 second and third bedrooms in between the two, which would, the, the question would, I would have is, do you have an estimate of the school impact? That's obviously a, a big, big thing for us. You know, you move into the community, we want you to send your kids to, to the good school, to our schools. Do you have a feel for how that would impact our school populations?
We, we haven't gotten to that level of analysis yet, right? We're, we're in the preliminary phases of just getting to the eligibility of
Sure.
the site itself. But to your point, the state really kind of dictates the unit mix.
Uh, yeah.
To, to some, to some degree. And, but, you know, we would want to, we, we think there, there's a number of one bedrooms, too, you know, that might help with certain types of.
Yeah, I, I'm not afraid of 55 more kids going to our, our schools. I don't think that's a bad impact in any, any sense. I just want to make sure that we, we're currently going through a major reassessment of, you know, our school capacity. And so we need to think about, you know, if, if these or other affordable housing or, or other housing things are, are in the works, we need to just be able to plan and be prepared for it. You know, the, if we were to somehow shrink our school system only to find out that we needed more schools, that would be, that would not be good. So I, it, to the extent that you can have information like that or if you've got other properties where you're managing similar facilities and can, can make some estimate, I think that would, would, would help us understand the impact of the, of the development.
I think that is an action item.
Yeah. The, the second question I have is, and I, I'm a fan of affordable housing. I've been a volunteer with Habitat for a long time. And this can put more traffic onto Route 9, it's a fact of life. And it's, you know, as you know, you can only go one way on, on Route 9, so it's going to, will we need to be thinking about any additional infrastructure to facilitate turning around?
I, I don't think any additional infrastructure, but there are traffic studies, I believe, that are ongoing right now in that corridor. I was talking with the fire chief in the fall of last year. And so I could look into seeing what, where they stand with those, that traffic analysis.
Okay, yeah, those would be the two big questions, but, you know, it's an interesting proposition.
Thank you.
Just two quick questions. Is there a Ferris, a comparable Ferris project nearby that you could give us the name of?
From a residential apartment building? There isn't really. We're more focused in commercial real estate with tenants and leasing. Those are, that's been our focus. But with the COVID and the way things changed, we've been kind of shifting our business model a little as well.
All right, that's, okay. And the other question I had, if, if you couldn't build both of them, would you build one of them?
Yes, we would love to, yeah.
Thank you.
And we, we do have, just one more quick follow-up is, we, we do have, we do have residential development experience in Brookline and other, other cities, but it's, it's been more residential homes versus apartments.
An entire home?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good.
Thank you.
Very interesting, thank you. Couple of things. One, you mentioned electric. Are you going to heat with electric here?
Yes.
So no, no natural gas?
No.
Also, I'd follow up with Mr. Hamilton's point. I guess I certainly wouldn't object to fewer three-bedroom units, given the school situation. I don't know what kind of flexibility you have there. And also, one of the conversations, I've been on the zoning board, as Mr. Dennington has, and a, a frequent conversation about these is mitigation payments. So we would be very interested in understanding what you're interested in proposing for that. And as we go along, I think that'll be a conversation that's worth having.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sitting here? So as I explained to you before, I know exactly, I mean, I'm right next door to 120, so I get that one pretty well. Why did you pick 56?
You know, it's funny, I, I, I'm not sure. It's just how it all worked out from a dimensional perspective of what the site, because I was actually looking at the square footages. And the 60 unit has a smaller square footage than the 56. But there's a rounding error, not error, but there's a rounding thing as well with, you know, affordability and how many units have to be designated as affordable.
I get that. The reason I'm bringing up 56, the last computation that's been done that we're relying on today as far as what would get us into what we call the safe harbor area over the 10% is 66. So if it turns out you end up doing one and not two, it would be very helpful if we had 66 instead of 56. So just kind of keep that in mind. But I want to emphasize something that both Mr. Stibers and Mr. Hamilton said. So the school issue he brought up is a real issue. We're in the, you may remember Neri School, which is now 53 years old. We're in the process of finalizing plans to do something to Neri. It's going to be reconstructed in one form or the other. And we have, we work with the state. The state gives us about 20% of the money to, to build a school, if we rebuild it. And we are relying on demographic studies that don't include any significant addition to the school population from any large project. I don't call this a large project, but we've got another 40B application that is, is pending right now with what we call Park Central with Bill de Petri. We've got a law, the MBTA Communities Act, that we've got to comply with that is wanting us to add a whole lot of density to certain areas. So we are concerned about engaging in this school project and locking ourselves in, especially if we close the school. Right now, we could actually close a school based on what we think is a population. But that's always an iffy thing to begin with. So it is helpful to take into account what, especially a three-bedroom, you know, what we might expect as far as school population. Because again, 50, 56 and 56 is not going to be a deal breaker. But 56 and 56, and then MBTA and Park Central could add a whole lot of kids to a school population that we're not banking on right now. So we've got to make sure we make a really good decision with that school. So definitely keep that in mind as this goes through. So we definitely do want to hear from you and understand what you're doing because that decision is the most expensive project this town has ever undertaken by far. As you know, construction prices are way up, reimbursement rates are way down. And so we want to make sure we make a solid decision that's going to last for a long, long time and not five years ago, what did we do by closing a school when now we've got a lot more kids than we thought we were going to have?
Neri School is such a nice site for the schools that, you know, it would be nice to see an investment there for, for the long term of the town.
And there's going to be an investment. So either we're going to keep all four schools open or we're going to close one school and expand Neri. So that's kind of our two choices right now, so.
Thank you.
So septic system both places?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that was one of my questions. I didn't know what you were going to do there. Okay, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Michael, could you speak a little bit more to, you know, you said that you first had a meeting with Mass Housing, and then they encouraged you to come and kind of socialize the potential applications here? Is that something that was a requirement or just encouraged? Because, you know, my understanding is you could just go straight to Mass Housing, get a project eligibility letter, and then, or no, there's a site visit before that, right? So are you here kind of to get input on maybe revising aspects of your application before you finalize it? Or just to start to begin to get the word out there so the community knows about this is something that might ultimately be at the ZBA several months from now?
Right. I think they strongly encouraged it. I'm not sure it's a technical requirement, but they would like to, you know, have advance notice to the communities. And we would like your input. And we would like to, you know, have that conversation with the state housing as well, right? And, you know, we, we would, would have even considered a Friendly 40B, so to speak, where we would come to you. But we thought we'd start it off this way and, and then work together.
Okay. Well, just my preliminary feedback, you know, I think that this is something that should be seriously considered. It's a potential opportunity for the town, both for, you know, meeting our need to generate 66 units to meet our minimum 40B goal, but also to do it in places where there's less, there's less impact on smaller residential roads. So I thought it was very encouraging that, you know, for both of these, that there would be, access in and out would only be on Route 9. Would you need to seek any additional relief from Mastot for that or? Okay.
We, we don't believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's the only comments I've got. Sure.
So.
And then we're going to turn it over to the Planning Board.
So Friendly 40Bs are not off the table? One or the other?
Yeah.
They're not off the table, right? Okay, all right, that's good.
I'd say 66 sounds friendlier to me.
One other to that 66, I don't know, I, I heard this state census
Yeah.
is changing, so I don't know.
So.
That's the updated number?
The figure that I, I was looking at was from the, the Housing Production Plan dated April 2020. So that's correct. The number might be different now.
So the, is Colleen here? Is she here? No. What I've been told, and Planning Board, correct me, this is straight from Dorian Juzinski's mouth, which is, the state is now, in this month of June, finalizing the denominator, based on the 2020 census, right? So we'll have a new denominator. And of course, we've been feeding them new units as they've come in. So the numerator should be correct. So we are waiting for a new number, but 66 is the number before this gets finalized. That's the best we've got at this point, but it may change.
Thank you, Kathy.
Good evening. Thanks for coming in, Michael. I'm Jesse Stein, member of the Planning Board. These are my other board members in this row. So I'm just going to pass the mic after I do my few questions. So would Ferris Development be retaining ownership as rentals?
Yes.
Okay. Which is great, because that way we get 100% credit for our DHCD inventory. So that's appreciated. That was my main thing. As far as the current site usage, what's going on, on the sites right now?
120, we, we've expanded one of our partners, our tenants, Paramount Recovery Centers, has been doing a big expansion in the 120 building. And we, you know, we lease out to the IRS and some other tenants in that space. And then on the 250 site, we've gutted that entire building, and we're turning that into self-storage. So we're hoping to go live in the, in the fall of this year with a new company concept that Dave will announce at a future date.
Okay.
A storage concept, though, contractor services kind of thing.
My other questions were really around traffic and egress and stuff like that, but it sounds like that's, you know, very much in flux or, I mean, you already have egress permitted
Yeah.
through DOT for the current use. I don't know if you need to go back to them for this change.
We'll check. I, I think, I think we'll be okay there. It used to be a commercial office building with, I, I forget how many spaces, but a couple hundred, you know, spaces for, for cars back then. But we, we don't need that space any longer.
Okay. Pass it to Lisa.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for, for coming. Thank you for the presentations. Jesse asked two of my questions already, so I'm in good company. Just, I want to verify, on your presentation, and again, it may just be a typo, it shows for 120 56 units, but the plan shows 60.
I just, I just saw the typo right before.
60 is the correct number. Okay, I just wanted to make sure as we're talking about it. Thank you. And I think one of the things that I'm going to be interested in, and hopefully the Select Board is as we move forward, that there is an agreement, a decision, a special permit dating back to 1990 that limited access and, and building on the back portion of the lot. So I would be interested to hear from council how this may or may not affect that decision. Just something as we move forward.
Yes.
And the rest are just minor comments, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So 250, I would request, you know, screening around those for the residents that do abut that property. And also 120, although it's far from residences, that's our town conservation land. And it would be nice not to see a four-story building when you're walking through that bucolic land. Is there any secondary egress proposed?
There isn't any proposed at this time. You know, when we get into the Planning Board phase of things, you know, we could work with you guys on that. We do own a property on Parkerville Road, but, you know, in support of the neighborhood, you know, we would prefer to just have egress and. you know, we would prefer to just have egress and ingress off of Route 9.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think public safety often looks for an emergency access or something.
Yeah.
What was the other? Oh, and similar to what Ms. Brascio brought up, there was a special permit for 118, 120 that said only two buildings, so I don't know how that, a third building on that lot would affect that.
I'd have to defer that to Brian, our chief operating officer. He handles those kind of aspects of legal things. But we would be A&R-ing, similar to what we did with 250 is we'd A&R off the residential piece of those commercial buildings.
But it has no frontage, how would you A&R it?
Yeah, we've got some legal opinions on that. Again, I wouldn't be able to speak to it as well as Brian could, but we could have that conversation with you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thanks for the presentation. I appreciate that you're planning to put the traffic onto Route 9 and not our sensitive roadways. I want to say thank you for that. I wanted to ask you if you could talk a little bit about sustainability, either in the building materials or, for example, if you would put in electrified parking spaces for EV charging at the spot.
Yes, so we are, and there are some code changes coming that might have just happened in building. And I'm not an expert in that area. I just won the Westminster Planning Board, so I, me and my associate, he's actually an expert in that. So at the right phase, I'm going to be bringing him in as a consultant for us, you know, but we've planned for some of that.
That's great. Okay. I'll just tell you that South Road has adopted the DOE Energy Stretch Goals, but there's a new sustainability goal that we haven't yet adopted, which would be for wiring in, you know, electrification for potential EV charging.
Yes.
And that's a sort of a, an additional stretch goal that this town hasn't yet adopted. I hope that we do in the future, but I'm happy to see that you'd be looking at something like that for the properties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for your question.
I've got one last follow-up question before we open it up to the public. For the 250 site, is there, how is the, like, the topography and elevation of that site? Where you're proposing to build, would it kind of sit on top of the hill where you could see it from lower lying areas or, because I know 120, it's just very flat, right?
Well, interestingly enough, and Ms. Cook, you brought it up on the 120. Actually, I, and I do know, I was a kid playing out in the conservation land in the farmer's land there, but it actually has a steep elevation and we're actually going to be coming into the grade of it. So it's still, I think there'll be wooded, you know, and elevation behind there. We're going to try to, we want to put in bike storage, so we wanted to kind of cut in a little bit of a basement into it so that we could provide, you know, bike storage and pet washing and stuff like that. On 250, I'm not an expert on Skyler Road and Sarston Stone, but as you know, they kind of go up.
Yep.
Right? And I've walked the woods back there. And, you know, I called our civil engineer actually today about, because the canopies and I noticed that on some of his site plans. So he thinks that there still would be a good amount of canopies of trees either on abutters' properties, on Sarston Stone. He identified three or four address numbers and then he said the same thing with the other street, that there might be some. But I'm a landscape guy. I personally would like to, you know, develop a good screening program and whether it's giant green arborvitae's and things like that, but also native, you know, eastern redbud plants and some of these more upland and wetland type of plants would be something we'd definitely consider.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
If there aren't any other questions from the planning board, I'd like to open up to questions from the public, if anyone has any questions. Please feel free to come up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
My name is John St. Andre. I live at 14 Skyler Drive here in town and I am in the neighborhood of 250 Turnpike Road and the proposed 40B is going to affect not only me, but obviously the abutters who abut that area. I have a question for Mr. Ferris. Thank you for coming forward tonight and sharing with us what you're, what you're looking into or what you plan on doing rather than just going ahead and doing it. We all appreciate that. We all have a concern. This, as you know, this residential area that you want to develop and put the 40B on is subject to restrictions that the zoning board of appeals placed on that property as well as the board of selectmen or the select board did many years ago. And those restrictions prevent building, any building on that residential lot, including the 40B that you propose. They also prevent access from that residential lot to Parkerville Road, which I think you've addressed in your plans here. But how do you plan on getting around those restrictions where the 40B will be in direct violation of those?
Well, so I'm not the general counsel for Ferris Development, right? Brian Sharvell is our chief operating officer and general counsel, but he'd be a better person to directly answer that, but I believe we've looked...
Ferris, can you talk into the microphone?
I'm sorry. I believe we've looked into that and we've had some legal opinions on that, but I'm not prepared to provide that.
Okay.
I can't speak to it.
And I'm not an expert in 40B applications, but as I understand it, in order for you to apply for an eligibility letter, I believe the agency has to determine that you have legal access or legal title to the land that you're developing. You don't have the legal right to build on that residential lot. How are you going to get around that?
Well, again, sir, that's your opinion. I don't know.
Okay.
I'm not involved in the legal aspects of this. I'm submitting the civil engineering and architect drawings.
All right. No, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hello, I'm James Nichols Whirley, 94 Main Street.
Hi, James.
Mr. Ferris, thank you so much for coming in. As a young person, it's nice to see a development that maybe I'll be able to afford one day. At the beginning, you mentioned that there'd be a possibility for solar panels on either one of the two sites, but you said there was an issue with the code in town. Do you know if you could speak more on that, on the possibility of solar?
So as part of the building development process, it has to be enablement-ready for solar.
Okay.
And then, so we haven't really got into construction. These are high-level documents right now, right, for eligibility purposes. When we get into the construction documents, that's where we'll define more of that. But my brother's a big proponent of green energy and solar.
Good. Well, hopefully there won't be any barriers on the town side to that happening. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So Eric Glazer, 9 Skyler Drive. I will be close to one of the abutters. The property in question doesn't actually directly abut my property, but it's very, very close. So we've been through this journey, I think, around the 250 commercial development and we were aware of the proposal to develop a residential lot or development in the area. And I think some of our initial concerns as a neighborhood, because we've had discussions around this, were the clear cutting of basically five acres of trees. That was a first consideration. Secondly, there was, and I'm sure this will come up through the permitting process, the conservation committee identified, because they went through conservation as well, there are wetlands considerations and there was, I think, some ambiguity around where exactly those wetlands and where in the boundary exists. So I'd maybe welcome on that specific point, a question. Have you done any additional work around the wetlands and where that barrier exists and how it impacts the development?
Yes, thank you for your question. James, our civil engineer, could speak to it better than I, but we worked with the town over last fall to delineate all the wetlands and in the stormwater management. So we've been working very closely with conservation on that. And there was an independent, actually, the town had brought in an independent wetlands expert to work with our wetlands team, so.
If I recall, and maybe something for the select board or others, as we go through the process, to confirm with the conservation committee, because I think they, we left a meeting last year where it was some ambiguity around where that delineation was. It was not, because there is some aspect of the property that had not been maintained and actually evolved into a wetland, so it may have adjusted. I'm just bubbling up, bubbling up as a point for consideration. Another one is around the traffic. I take that right-hand turn onto Parkerville every day. And while the commercial development discussions, there were considerations around making sure you could have a certain number of cars fit within the parking lot area to access. I do have concerns around being able to access Parkerville to get home safely when you have 66 units or, I mean, 66 cars or more coming in and out of that Route 9 access. Now, maybe there'll be further traffic studies, but I wouldn't dismiss the traffic consideration just because it doesn't empty onto Parkerville, which was one of the original considerations in the development. I think the traffic pattern, at least entering or going eastbound, is something to consider because I think it will be, I mean, I would have concerns about the level of traffic. That's one point. My next one is your total quantity of developments is 56 plus 56. Of those, what will be 40B? Because I just want to make sure for clarity for everybody, it's not a, it's not 66 units per se of 40B. You're developing 56 units of which 25% or 20% will be designated?
Correct.
So we're really talking about up to a maximum of 28 units of affordable housing, which still doesn't get us to the 66 requirement.
Not quite. They're all rental.
Oh, do they all count? Okay, that's a clarification.
Yes.
Okay, so one or the other in theory could satisfy the requirement for the 40B if it were at 66.
Not quite. Close.
But close. But if they were up to 66, then it would satisfy.
Probably not, because the new numbers will probably be a little higher with the 2020 census.
Okay.
But we're in the ballpark at least, so.
All right. So thank you for listening. And I also want to reiterate, thank you for bringing this forward. Say we went through this with David on the 250, so we know, we're aware of it, but we do appreciate you coming forth and, you know, having an open dialogue around it.
Thanks for your input.
Hi, Charlie Kraus, 21 Skyler Drive, also not a direct abutter, but, you know, up in the neighborhood.
Sure.
So not an expert in 40B, but just got interested in this whole project and started, took a day and read through the whole 40B documentation I could find on the mass.gov and so forth, just to educate myself. One thing I zeroed in on is I found this one area that specifically dealt with introducing a building that's very different from what's in the surroundings already. So they specifically bring up a community of single-family homes and introducing a much different scale building into that community. And there seems to be a lot of requirements in terms of heights and so forth, and I just want to make sure that somebody has looked at this and whether they comply with what's pretty much laid out here, that, you know, what you can do and not do in terms of size and so forth, that's all.
Yes, so we hired a licensed architect with a lot of experience in this area and also a 40B cloud Sherpa. But to your point, yes, fitment is an important piece, right? And these are preliminary drawings, right, for the eligibility aspect of things. So, you know, as things progress and move down the road, adjustments can be made and feedback can be taken and considered.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 125 Parkerville. So I am a direct abutter of what's being proposed at 250 Turnpike. And there's a group of about 25 of us that, you know, John is representing at this point in time that are very concerned about what you're proposing there and the fact that it would be a clear cut of five and a half acres of town forest at this point, and very concerned about the, all the concerns that both John raised and Eric raised and Charlie raised, just about the past restrictions that were put on the property and making sure that the town is taking that into considerations as this proposal goes forward.
Thank you.
I'm Blair Sutherland. I live at 139 Parkerville Road. I'm not a direct abutter, but I am involved with the neighborhood in looking at the impact of a development of this size on the neighborhood and in particular, in looking at the process by which the developer is moving forward. I will echo, I appreciate the opportunity to hear the presentation here and to have the participation of their various town boards asking meaningful questions. I'm interested in hearing how the process is going to go forward. Certainly, the issue about the potential covenant on the land is a consideration, you know, I think that is worth, is worth looking at. And I appreciate, though, the opportunity to speak and to hear what you have to say as things go forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other public comments about the presentation by Mr. Ferris? I want to thank you for, select board, any other final questions? Sam?
Thank you, Andrew. As one who's served on the zoning board for a couple of these 40B projects, just to clarify a couple of points for the public. One is that the select board is not in the decision process here. This will be done through the zoning board with other boards, planning, CONCOM typically having input to the process. Second, a question about the zoning requirements in terms of things like height and setback and so forth. 40B actually allows waiver of those requirements for these types of projects. So in fact, the town, by nature of 40B, doesn't have the same control that it does through the zoning bylaws. So there is flexibility there with the state's intent to make it easier to develop housing like this. So it's a different set of rules and requirements than the normal approval process. But hopefully, the town, the developer can work together to find a way to put a project together that alleviates at least most, if not all, the concerns that people have about it, but we do have relatively limited control over the process. Thank you.
So I want to thank you for coming and giving the informational presentation because I think one of the benefits it gives to you is you've now heard some of the, you know, neighborhood concerns on 250. I didn't really hear anything that was all that critical or negative of the other one, 120. So I think that one, the impact appears to be quite minimal and I think it's, that's a real opportunity for the town. And then for the other application, potential application, you know, you've heard some of the concerns and you can see if you can address them with your next filing and be prepared to address them if and when you go to the ZBA.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate you rescheduling it when we had that little follow-up on the previous schedule and thanks for seeing us so quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is the interview and appointment of Christopher Evers for the Neary School Building Committee. Is Mr. Evers available with us? Oh, excellent.
Thank you, Andrew. Hello, Chris Evers, 16 Maple Crest Drive, South Road, Mass.
So is, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself? So is, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself, your interest in serving on the Near East School Building Committee, your qualifications, et cetera?
Yep. So I applied to the, the committee, received an email from my, my children superintendent. I saw the need for committee members, reached out and inquired about some of the, who's on the committee and found out that there was a, there was a need for someone with some construction background. I've been in the construction industry for the last 20 years, currently a master plumber. And I also hold a construction supervisor's license unrestricted. I currently work for an HVAC company that primarily deals with commercial construction. I feel like I could provide value in, in those expertise with, with the planning, the pre-construction. I do a lot of value engineering, early phases of projects, a lot of, you know, management of, of equipment and different systems and different, different ways to heat or cool a building. The company I work for does plumbing, HVAC, and fire protection. So those are my, my, my strong skills. And I feel like I could provide some input. In the last three years, I was able to contribute to a lot of higher education facilities and different universities through COVID on indoor air quality. That was a big thing for the last three years and how to mitigate those, those issues and provide ventilation and fresh air and proper air changes to the classrooms, which a lot of our schools are outdated and don't have currently. You know, I go in for my kid's class and I see the current setups and I just want to change it now. But the school has lasted 56 years, as you said, so it's, it served its purpose and it was built well, obviously, if it's still operable and, and standing 56 years later. And I feel like I can provide value for a new school. And like you said, it's a very large project and I'd like to be part of it to contribute to the, the community. I always wanted to help out within the community. I served as a school committee member for Assabett Valley, for Southborough, representing Southborough for several years. And it just wasn't my thing, you know, education. I just, you know, this is more in my wheelhouse and I'd like to be able to help. And hopefully, I don't think my kids will benefit from it, but maybe my grandchildren will, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Hamilton, you have any questions?
No, just thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
We need you.
My only question is, why does the term expire 6:30, 2023?
So all the terms for all board and committee members expire 6:30. It's a little awkward because you're also going to be considering your first review tonight of board and committee appointments. But if we want him to start now, we need to do the appointment so that he will expire on 6:30. I am assuming that this board would then be very open to reappointing him, beginning on July 1st for the full, the next appointment, which would be the full year.
If he behaves between now and 6:30.
Well, I understand there's three more people to ask questions still, so, you know.
So my great, this is an ad hoc committee, too. That's why it's, you know, one of your terms. We have to keep reappointing. It's not a permanent standing committee.
No, just thank you.
Thank you.
Also, thank you. This is the kind of skill that we need more of in terms of a lot of these committees, often on these things, we wind up with too few people who have the actual practical skills that are involved in the project. So this is a great, great skill set. And thank you again for applying.
Thank you.
So I'll be on the committee with you. I think you know Jason Malinowski personally and Jim Hagerty personally.
I do. Jim is actually my neighbor, yep.
They both rave about you and I'm very excited you're going to be on this. So we do need your expertise. There's no one on the committee currently that has truly a construction background, so this is going to be very helpful. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing this.
Thank you very much for stepping forward. I think it's going to be an exciting project to work on.
Thank you.
I move that the select board point Christopher Evers to the Near East School Building Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Second. Thank you.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone's time.
So the next step in the process is, there will be an appointment letter and you come in and see, get sworn in by your neighbor.
Great. Thank you. Should be easy.
Maybe just walk next door and see him.
The next item on the agenda is the poll hearing for Hammond Street for National Grid. Do you know if we have a National Grid representative with us?
We do, I believe, Mr. Okay. We do, I believe, Mr. Silver is, is online.
I am. Good evening, everybody.
Okay. So, Mr. Purple, would you please read the notice of the public hearing?
Sure. The Southborough Select Board should hold a public hearing Tuesday, June 6, 2023, 7:00 PM, in Call of Hearing Room at the Southborough Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass, to consider a petition by Mass Electric Company, National Grid, and Verizon New England Incorporated to install an anchor on pole five on Hammond Street. Meeting may also be viewed, listened to, or viewed by the public through a link located at mass-southborough.civicplus.com/764/virtual-meetings. Southborough Select Board, May 23rd, 2023.
So sir, could you please introduce yourself and just give us an overview of what you're looking to do here?
My name is Jeff Silver. I am a distribution designer for National Grid. There is an existing tree that the town is going to be removing. And there is an existing pole anchor on that tree. And once the tree is going to be removed, we're going to be re-anchoring the guy into the ground rather than into the tree.
Seems to be pretty straightforward.
Really?
Any questions?
We try to keep it easy.
I was surprised that you actually need to have a hearing for, for something like this, where it doesn't involve the installation of a new pole. Are there any questions from the board?
Looks pretty simple.
Are there any comments? I see Mr. Litt just moved his leg as if he's gonna, I think I know what he's gonna say.
You probably do. Tim Litt, Woodland Road. I'm going to make my usual comment about these. I would appreciate it if the engineering for the guy wire is done in such a way that a sidewalk is not obstructed, should we put one there at some point?
Unlikely that a sidewalk is going in there, given the rest of the structure there. But I understand the point. I often make that point myself, that I passed on this one. So we have a hand up in the audience.
We do? Okay. George Michel?
Michael, yes. Hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, could you just please introduce yourself and give your address?
George Michael, I live at 14 Parker Street, which is the property directly behind the, the infected tree that is being removed and the pole. I received the drawings and the drawing is inaccurate. The, the location of the pole shows that it's on the corner, on the right-hand side corner of Hammond. It's actually on the left-hand side corner of Hammond. My only concern is the, my, I have a staircase that leads into my property right there. And I just want to make sure that the anchor, when it's installed, the drawing is corrected and the anchor is not obstructing my stairs to my, my property.
So the, the anchor will probably be approximately five to 10 feet off of the pole. And I'm looking at Google Maps right now of your property and it, you seem to be well beyond where that pole is. Am I, am I correct in that estimation?
I haven't measured it. I would say it's somewhere between five and 10. I can, I can Google measure it, but I was just going by the drawing and I want to make sure that you guys have a second.
That drawing is just to depict that it's going into the tree, because you can't have the tree on top of the pole, because then you can't see the anchor. So that depiction is not to, to a scale. It's just to depict that what we are doing, and you can actually visibly see that.
Okay. So, so am I hearing that my entryway would not be obstructed?
That is correct.
Okay. Then I'm, I'm okay with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Is there, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Okay. I move that the select board approve the installation of the new anchor off pole five on Hammond Street to be able to remove the tree guy.
Second.
All those in favor? I think that ends that matter.
Ends that matter.
All right. Next up on the agenda is, we're going to hear from Mr. Perrin, our facilities director, with a update on the recent projects that are underway right now, including the townhouse improvements.
Recording in progress.
Hello?
Hi, John. How are you? We can, we can hear you. We can't see you.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yep, we can, we can see you. We can hear you. And everyone as well. How you been flipping in and out here? So John, now, you're not muted. Do you want to just start your presentation? Okay. I don't think he hears us. He can't hear us. Yeah. Last person who zoomed in had, could hear us fine, right? Okay. Should we, to Jennifer and then move around the order a little bit? We'll go to Jennifer and then come back to John?
He's trying to restart, maybe give him a.
He could be coming back quickly, so I don't know if you want to just do a report or do something.
Clearly needs a better town provided computer.
Yeah.
Could be his wireless.
Yeah. Okay, we'll give him, we'll give him a minute here. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes. All right, so.
Can you hear us?
No. Well, John, if you can hear us, but basically what we're interested in is an overview here of the status of the progress made on the senior center and also status of the ongoing townhouse renovations, the exterior renovations and the windows, et cetera. Maybe what we'll do is, we'll listen to John and then if there are questions, we'll type them and send them to him.
High tech. Interesting, National Grid.
This is going to be a little bit awkward where I can't hear you, so I'm going to try to just take this a little methodically with the three projects I was asked to speak about tonight. The first one we'll talk about is the townhouse renovations project. As I'm sure everyone is aware, whenever you drive by the townhouse or come into it, we have a major renovation project underway. Currently, all the old pointing from the building has been removed and the process of repointing the building in the historic dark gray slash black color has begun. We have removed all the inner window sashes already. They have been brought out to the factory, excluding the few behind the selectmen's table right now. They're having the glazing replaced and they're going to be restored back to what they should be, which is originally a black paint on the exterior to go with the new black storm windows that'll be coming in. We are going to be replacing the EPDM roof as well as the asphalt single roof around the building. Some of the roofing project will begin next week. We don't anticipate any additional interruptions to parking or comings and goings at the townhouse, so we already have with that. And we're scheduled this week with the DPW to remove some of the overground shrubs and hedgerie around the building. And our goal is, once this project's done, to replant with some cleaner-looking plants and trees that will show off the building when it's done. Basically, the project is on schedule. We've run into a couple little project problems that we've been able to take care of relatively easily with small change orders to date. They haven't been huge by any means, so financially, we're in very good shape. We do have to do repairs to the crickets on the roof. Those are what hold the chimneys in place and give them structure. We're on that right now, and that's the biggest thing we've run into. So overall, everything's looking good with that project. Let's move on to the senior center project, because unfortunately, no one can really ask me any questions right now. We went out to bid for the foundation work on the addition. The bids came in last week and we had a low bidder of $43,250. And that's basically what we anticipated a foundation would cost. So that came in pretty much right in line where we were hoping to see it. So I would anticipate at your next select board meeting, on the consent agenda, the approval for that contract, we're just finishing up the background checks and references. So that's great. We'll get the foundation, hopefully, you know, beginning to the middle of August, give it some time to cure. And then Assabett will be coming in, in September, when they return to school, and we'll start construction. And the final thing I wanted to talk about was the upgrade to LED lighting in town. On May 9th, I sent over the request to National Grid, the official one, with the requested wattages that we had taken a discussion on and you took a vote on. That is now in the hands of the Outdoor Lighting Engineering Division. Once they get that together as an order, they will order up the actual fixtures. And we're hoping to have everything installed within nine to 12 months. So actually, the timeframe's a little bit better than we originally anticipated. Must be the supply chains opening up. Yay. Other than that, everything's going really well with all three of these projects. I really couldn't be happier right now with these three things. So hopefully, everything stays on this course and we'll continue down this road. And that's basically all I have this evening. Again, where no one can ask me questions, I guess we're going to have to call that it.
Thank you, John.
Have a great night, everyone.
Unfortunately, you can't hear us say thank you, but. All right, so. Not sure what happened there. Does someone? I'm muted. I'm muted. Does anyone have a, the, their audio on, on their laptop? Okay. There you go. Let's try this. Mute myself. Can I do that? Okay. I'm conscious of his time, the time that it takes for us to tell you the question, you to type it out, blah, blah, blah.
Mine's quick.
Okay, sure.
So, ask him just to confirm this. Sounds like budget for senior center that we've got is fine. That's number one. Number two, the contingency for the townhouse won't be needed. And then, great job on the timing of the new LED lights. That's a lot faster than what we were told.
And I've got one other question to add to the list, when you're ready. Sure. Okay.
As of right now, it appears that we are still in good shape for both the Cordova Hall addition project financially, as well as the townhouse. Originally, town meeting allocated, I believe it was 2.2 million. And we're right now looking at a total of like 1.6 million. And there may be some small additional changes from change orders, but I, I don't see there being an issue to have to ask for any additional money on the townhouse either.
Good. So, and my question was. Good, so, and my question was when we... Is it too late if any resident has a request to put a new light fixture on an existing pole? Because I remember when John was with us the last time, he said this was an opportunity for people, if they saw a street that was too dark, to make a request to the town to add a new light, since we're gonna have new lights installed.
The question was if it's too late, if a resident wants to add a fixture to a pole if the street is too dark? No, it's not too late at all, I could always just send over a request to Bob Moran, and he could pass it over to outdoor lighting. That, that should not be an issue that I can see.
Through National Grid, okay, so, I mean, I have, I have seen some, you know, poles in my neighborhood where I've thought I, they should use some additional lights and then pass them on to Mr. Parent, so this is an opportunity for other people, if you know of other things like that. Okay, thanks, John. I'm sorry for the technical difficulties.
Thank you, everyone, have a great night, I know this is a little awkward, thanks again.
Sweetie, your presentation. Can I add a little color for Al and Marguerite's benefit, as far as what I just asked?
Sure.
So, Al, being the fiscal hawk that you are from your decades on advisory, so the senior center addition is being paid for by ARPA money, that was one of the requests, so we're doing that with ARPA money. And then the windows here, all the project here is being done with CPC money, so none of it came out of the tax levy, neither one.
CPC goes out of the tax.
Wow, okay, all right.
So CPC comes out of the tax levy.
Okay, you're right, so it's still CPC money, though, as far as that bucket goes.
Yeah, understood.
And ARPA comes out of our pockets.
Out of the debt ceiling.
Hi, Jennifer.
Jennifer's muted.
We're gonna have the same issue.
Jennifer, you're muted, can you, can you hear us?
Same thing.
Can you hear us? Yes. Okay, yeah. I would like to, you think we can take a recess and see if we can find a technical solution to this?
Try to get it fixed, yeah, but the, the National Grid worked, so that's strange.
Can someone just type a message out to Jennifer, explain what's going on?
She's unmuted.
She can't, she can't hear us.
She can't hear us, yes.
Yeah.
What, Al?
Is that your, your?
It's in it right here.
That's my machine. There, now, that's Vanessa.
So, am I okay to stop and start again?
Yeah.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Should we take a little recess? Uh, let's see, I just sent her a quick text. How did this ever happen? It seemed to start just when this recording was starting. Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly, but it was from over. Yep.
Would you expect National Grid to be very...
Technological.
Okay, we're now recording again. The excitement level drops. I know that, yeah, I know that, yeah.
I would like to make a motion to the bottom of the recess.
Second.
Second. All right.
......................................................
Difficulties interlude, and I hope that Jennifer Thompson from Capital Strategic Solutions... Yay, all right, you can hear us.
I can hear you!
We can hear you!
Fantastic.
I was like, oh, can they hear me, should I keep saying?
Wonderful, wonderful.
Hold up signs.
Okay, so...
I almost thought about doing that.
Do you want to give a brief, just introduce yourself again, we have two new members on the board. I know, I remember seeing you at at least one other meeting before, but just introduce yourself and the background of your firm and what you're looking to do here tonight.
Sure, so my name is Jennifer Thompson, I'm one of the partners of Capital Strategic Solutions, we're a firm located in Marlboro, made up primarily of former and retired municipal officials. For example, I was a town administrator for many years, and we have other folks like that on staff. I first met you in Southborough, it's been a few years, if you can believe it, provided some assistance with your CARES funding and FEMA reimbursements during the pandemic, as well as for your ARPA funding. And, you know, I've been involved a little bit behind the scenes with all of that stuff over the last two years, and have had some recent conversations with Mark and the finance team about grants. We do do a lot of grant work in our, in our field, so many of us have quite a bit of grant experience and just the nature of all of the COVID relief and infrastructure funding that's coming down. We just tend to have a lot of exposure to that from, from many, from many communities. So I know Southborough was looking to see if there were other grant opportunities that we could look at. When we crafted your, you know, we have an on-call contract with you that you fund through your ARPA funding, primarily for ARPA compliance, if you need assistance with your treasury reporting, and like I said, we assisted with your FEMA reimbursements. But also, we had included in there, when I met with the board, any sort of assistance that you might need on any other state or federal grants. So if there are ones that come up that you do need some assistance with, we're happy to help. And then I'm not sure which subjects you wanted to talk to tonight. I know Mark did send your 10-year capital plan, we looked through that and kind of identified areas that we think might be worth looking at, but I think it's more important to kind of hear from you what your priorities are and what you want us to be looking out for, for Southborough in particular.
Okay, so I mean, I'd be just most interested in if you had an opportunity to look at the 10-year capital plan, if there's particular opportunities you see there.
Sure, so I'll keep going. I didn't want to do all the talking if you didn't want me to, but that's fine. So we did look at your 10-year capital plan, and, you know, you, you do a lot of things already in Southborough, very, very well. You've, you've gone and looked at opportunities that have been available to you over the years. So some of the things that we recommend to communities, you've already done. So you take advantage, you know, you're a green community, you're in the process of updating your master plan, I saw, I think your open space plan as well, you're an MVP community, so you have an MVP plan, which makes you eligible for those type of grants. You've used the community compact, you're a complete streets community, so a lot of the things that, you know, we try to help communities that don't have those things in place, you already do, which is fantastic. That kind of leads you into other funding opportunities. In terms of specifically, in terms of your capital plans, just some highlights of some of the things that we saw, so there are federal AFG grants for your fire department, they are very, very competitive, but we are seeing more equipment coming through them finally. So you do have, I think, there's a truck, T-21, and then some smaller equipment replacements that depending on when the AFG grants come out, I think those will come out in the fall. We'll be able to look at those and see if any of the equipment in your fire capital plan would be eligible for those. We have a few retired fire chiefs on staff too, who are just very familiar with those. So that's an area we could certainly look at if you're interested. The next one's very obvious, I'm sure it's already on your radar. You have the Trotty School Roof Repair, I'm sure the town and the school is already looking at whether or not you want to go for the MSBA accelerated roof repair program. Although if that's something you needed help with, we certainly could, but I suspect you're probably already all over that. You are looking at your regional dispatch, which will open you up to some savings and some, you know, 911 grant opportunities, so that's a great step that I think the town is taking. And that'll, I think you have 900K planned further out in 2029 to kind of replace your dispatch and emergency radio, so if you do make the move to the regional dispatch, I think that will probably come off your CIP. The next one is some of the smaller equipment in public safety through your ambulance program. We might be able to get some small NEMA grants that we're seeing come through, so we can look at those for public safety if you'd like. You have a pretty large library remodeling renovation in your CIP. I'm sure there's, you know, there's some state construction grants that you, again, might already be looking at down the line. If not, we can assist with looking at that for that large library project. Recreation, there's quite a few recreation projects in there. We could certainly look at whether or not you want to go for a park grant next year. The issue with the park grant is the match is pretty high. Some communities have used ARPA funds to, to make that match, but, you know, we could certainly, when that funding opportunity comes out, you know, at least make sure it's on your radar so you can take a look at and see if it's something that you want to pursue. And stop me if I'm going too fast because I am kind of just rolling through these quickly for you. Facilities, some of the projects, I'm sure you've already looked at this, but many of the projects that are in your CIP under facilities could fall under your green communities grants each year. The Flag School Historical Museum is a historical preservation grant that we've done for some other communities that you may be able to get some funding through that. Certainly Peninsula Trail, the State Trails Grant, that's already out this year, but I think we could go for it next year if you wanted to look at that. Public Works, I, I know there's a lot of road projects and, and things that you'd like to see done. That's probably the toughest area to get funding on. I think we talked about that maybe last year a little bit. But the other thing I didn't see in your plan, and it may be because you need to do an inventory and assessment of, is maybe your culverts. I suspect Southborough probably has quite a few small bridges and culverts that you might want to take a look at because there is grant funding available to that. You could even, if you don't already have it, apply for a grant to actually identify the culverts if you have them throughout town. I suspect you probably do, but we could live a little bit closer at that. You, you already take advantage of air marks, which is great. We could assist with that, but I think you already have a really good handle on that. And then, of course, there are the federal infrastructure grants. Some of the projects that you have are just not of the size or magnitude for some, for most of them, but we keep an eye on those pretty closely. So if we see something that comes up that is already in your capital plan and comes across our, our desk, we'll certainly make sure you're aware of it. Some of the, you know, infrastructure money that's coming down through the BIL, it is tough because it's, you know, being funneled through communities that just have lower income thresholds than Southborough. So there's just a lot of those grants that you're just automatically, probably not going to be eligible for. But we are starting to see a little bit more of a focus on smaller and mid-range towns that don't have to meet all of those low-income requirements. So we'll keep an eye on that for you as it continues to come down. Certainly, I'm sure you're active in your regional planning and your tip committee. I think we've talked before about federal safe streets and roads for all. That's a planning tool that we could look at that might make you eligible for further funding down the road. Like I said, you already do the complete streets. There's also the state shared streets program that we could look at. And there was one more I wanted to mention to you. Oh, the municipal pavement program. We could look at that as well. And then the final one, I wasn't sure, is if your ADA plan is up to date. And I meant to look on your website before I joined, but we could talk about that a little bit more. There is a grant if you need to get that plan updated as well. And I think that's enough for now. I've probably overwhelmed you and talked way too much.
Sam, any questions?
I, I have a list.
Okay.
Great.
All that's great, Jennifer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My concern all along has been that I think we've done a reasonable job of tracking down grant money in a variety of areas. And I think my impression has been that it's more opportunistic and driven by individual departments, committees, et cetera, et cetera, as they're more familiar with programs for them. And I think there are some pretty substantial infrastructure projects that my hope is, we're going to have a planning session soon here. And it would be great to come out of that with some sort of higher level focus on grants that we're interested in that may be far beyond our normal budget capability. So Jennifer, in no particular order, my list is, is, we would, it would be great to find funds for wastewater capability along Route 9. And Westborough, Westborough is actually looking at wastewater capacity on the eastern side of Westborough. And maybe some joint project that you build a bigger plant that could serve both towns potentially. So label it as regional or whatever. I think that would open up opportunity for us to develop commercial properties along Route 9 and expand the commercial tax base where we're very under capacity in terms of being able to generate tax revenue without hitting the residential side of the, of the business. Another one that's long been on my list is I'd love to have two pedestrian bridges across Route 9, one at Parkerville Road, one at Oak Hill Central Street. And there are those bridges along Route 9 in Framingham, for example. Other places have them. That's clearly a MassDOT issue. On the other hand, as you may know, we are very constrained in terms of accessibility through town. And Route 9 cuts us in half and the pike actually is not directly impacted that, but it cuts the town as well. Very desirable to be able to move north-south as well as east-west through town with pedestrians and cyclists and so forth. So if we can cross the Route 9 barrier there with a couple of pedestrian bridges, that would be wonderful. And the other part of that, the east-west link as well as north-south, is pedestrian causeway crossings. I've done a lot of traveling and go to places where they put a cantilevered boardwalk kind of thing next to a causeway. We can't drill into the reservoir very easily to get across those, those areas, but you can drive, drive a diagonal support into the bank of the reservoir and cantilever a boardwalk out there. And so that's clearly an issue not only of MassDOT but with MWRA and DCR potentially. But if, if we could find a way to get funding for those kinds of pedestrian bridges, and there are two or three that are pretty critical, there are a total of five, actually, I think, in town, it would be great to have. But that, in my mind, goes toward community connectedness kind of things. And I've seen publicity about grants about infrastructure projects that allow communities to come together more easily. And I think that certainly is one of those possibilities. Always interested in finding ways to fund additional open space. There are open space parcels out there. Now that the town doesn't own, that would be pretty critical to be able to buy for a variety of purposes. And again, money for that would be great. We're working on, looking at a community center, which there's some options for that. But again, there's some, I think, great need for that kind of a facility as well as recreation facilities. Again, building those things is not cheap, but something that we think of as being a very important community function. Those kinds of things actually have been come up, have been mentioned in our master plan. You mentioned that. We've actually finished it. It's been approved. We now have an implementation committee that's working on that. And I think, again, anything we can do to fund some of the projects out of the master plan would be great. We've got a sizable project going now for sidewalks. We've got like $700,000 worth of ARPA money for sidewalks. And that's a very small portion of what we need. There's, there are not many sidewalks in town. And this is also related to the infrastructure piece with crossing Route 9 as well as major north-south routes and east-west routes for sidewalks and, again, bike lanes and so forth. So that kind of infrastructure would be great to find money for. And we always need technology upgrades too, in a variety of ways. We, we've done some stuff in terms of, of wireless connections in town, but more of that, again, connecting more buildings with fiber, for example, again, is a great thing as well as other technology upgrades for things like GIS systems and, and data collection, document imaging and storage and so forth. We are, we've made progress recently, but we're still, in my view, sort of in the 1990s, maybe early 2000s in terms of, of that kind of stuff. And so I think there's great opportunity in terms of better access to information for the public. And finally, not last but far from least, is affordable housing. We're trying to re-energize the Affordable Housing Committee structure. And I think that money for those kinds of projects would be hugely helpful. And this MBTA communities thing is going to be a challenge for us. And so doing that, that, those housing projects where that's not the focus of MBTA communities, but if we could do that in a way that enhanced affordable housing, I think that frankly would actually reinforce the intent of the state there, which is, was not, I thought, well thought out when they did that. But, so that's my list. Anything's there that you can see as things develop that would be, that would fit there, I would certainly be interested in talking about, so easy.
That is, that's a great list.
No, no challenge, no challenge there.
Can I ask, can I ask a quick follow-up question?
Get that to us by Friday, please.
I, I have, I have two questions. One, have you looked at the One Stop for Growth for the, for the wastewater? Or is that something you'd want to look at for next year? Did you put anything in?
We have a planning project in there, I guess.
Okay.
But, but no, I mean, that, that's a big project. That's, you know, millions of dollars and so forth. So I think that, you know, it's probably not going to happen during my tenure on the board, but I think you got to start these things. And I think there are some interesting opportunities on that one. I think that's an important thing for the town long term because we're not, not going to make it on residential property tax, basically.
And then my second question was the GIS. So, and if you don't know this, it's fine. I can check with Mark or DPW. But, so the, do you use GIS within your public works for your asset management? Is that, do you have like an asset management system? I only ask because there are some grants to kind of, you know, upgrade GIS and asset management if you haven't already.
I don't think we are right now. We have a new DPS superintendent coming in in July. And so I think he, he will, I'm sure, take a look at that. We actually have a new pavement management system that we're in the process of implementing. And we're, we're, as part of that, I think we need to update our GIS generally because there is a, ArcGIS is the platform that most of these folks use. And I think we're compatible with that, but we don't have the full capabilities there. So I think that's going to cost some money too. But that seems to be something that would be very, a good candidate for grant funds somewhere out there, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
So thank you. That's, that's the wish list and it's way, way out there. But again, if you don't shoot, you don't score, as they say, so.
That's right. It's good to just have them on my radar too because, like I said, we're seeing a lot of stuff come through. So at least if I know exactly what you're, you know, what areas you want to focus on, it's nice to kind of already have those upfront. So that was very helpful.
Thank you.
So Jennifer, just FYI, the reason we got interested in talking to you again is because Sam, it kind of led the charge to get the pavement management system and we ended up using a vendor called Beta. And Beta said, you ought to be talking to your group as far as stuff. But anyway, okay, so I don't know how you follow Sam's list, but I'm, so I'm going to talk about two very specific things. I, I can't, I can't, I can't compete with that. But you mentioned the Flag School. So Flag School, we actually did submit a grant last week for One Stop to hopefully redo that under the program that is encouraging towns to kind of restart old, dilapidated, unused property. So if that one doesn't come through, I'd be interested in following up with the historic grant that you mentioned.
Okay.
Specifics, there's one specific one. Then the second one is, we have done a lot of road work downtown in the last few years. We're at the very end of the project, but there's one more piece that I think we're all forgetting, which is we've got to update the railroad crossing that goes through the town. And it's about $500,000 last time I saw, maybe $600 by now. It's my understanding from talking to one of our town residents who knows the railroad business pretty well that there is money in the state for railroad crossings. He took a look. He doesn't, I think he thinks that we may not qualify, but it'd be helpful to figure out whether we do for sure or not, or whether there's any wiggle room. It's a CSX crossing. So we're going to have to do that soon. We've got everything else done except for that. And right now, we're going to be out of pocket. That's, that's my two things I wish we would look at specifically soon to see if there, there's money for, for either one of those, especially if the One Stop fails as far as Flag School.
And there are two CSX crossings, actually. There's another on Central Street that we actually ought to have on the list to fix, if we can.
Well, yeah, that one looks like it's about.
Main Street is a key one, though.
Okay.
But we hear CSX talks to no one, so I don't know how that works, but.
So we, you know, this, I think this is the start of a continuing conversation. We've got quite a bit of money left in our ARPA money for you to continue to, to use toward working with you. So I think this is just one meeting toward a series of meetings to really see what, you know, what we really could specifically apply for, in your opinion.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, you know, we have, we have a great relationship with Beta and probably if you use other engineering firms, you know, we, we work with them as well. There's quite a few that we work with. They just kind of go hand in hand with some of the infrastructure grants. So, you know, if you're doing that sort of, I think Sam mentioned the infrastructure planning, things that, you know, where topics are going to come up that you think, you know, we need to be there, just let me know. Or we can stay in touch with Beta or whoever, you know, I don't know if you use Beta for your water and sewer as well, but if there's another engineering firm, like I said, the chances are we probably already work with them. So that'll kind of help us stay in queue in terms of what type of projects you have coming down the line and making sure we're looking at the right grants.
Marguerite? Hal? Okay. So this is a lot to think about, but, I mean, of the, of the lists Sam, that you had, I think one that I'm probably the most interested in is sidewalks. Because I've thought that the, you know, when we did the ARPA committee and we set aside, was it $700,000 for sidewalks? I've always had a little concern that that's not going to go as far as we would like it to go. And Jennifer, it's interesting, like, you know, we, we brought, you're coming on to make this presentation now right after we finished our, submitted our One Stop applications. But is there like a cycle to what you do in terms of most of these grants come up and their deadline to submit them is on a certain time of the year? Or, because that helps us as we think about our goal setting and planning for the next year? Or is it just there's grants that are available throughout the year at different times and you just have to look for them?
It is throughout the year, but I would say fall and spring are the two big ones. So a lot of them did just close in the spring. And then you'll see a little bit of a lull through the summer and then we'll see some more open up in the fall. With that being said, there's a lot of new grants. So a lot of the federal infrastructure grants, they're on a whole different time schedule. So it's not just like, we always know which ones are coming out in the spring and which ones are coming out in the fall in terms of, you know, the ones that have come out for the last, you know, five to six years. But I would say primarily those are the two general timeframes that we see most of them open up. But again, we're pretty, we're doing a lot of grant work, you know, statewide. So we'll, we'll make sure it's on your radar as things come up.
Okay. Marcus, anything you'd like to add to this?
No, I think, I mean, I'll, I'll repeat what Kathy said. I can't compete with Sam's list. So I, I think that, I, I think that, you know, we've touched on, you know, a lot of the things that are important.
We have the 10-year plan. He has the 100-year.
Yeah, Sam, yeah. Well, Sam said that this is going to go beyond his tenure, but that could be, that could be 30 or 40 years, depending on what you just laid out. But no, I, I think so we can, you know, we'll continue to work with Jennifer and as we get opportunities, you know, we can, we can bring those back to the board. I do like that there is another opportunity for us to do something with Flag School. I know Mr. Hamilton says he really doesn't want to spend any money on a, you know, an old and dilapidated building if, you know, in terms of tax revenue, you know, if we get that. But if we're able to do this through a grant and make it reusable and, and help us do it that way, I think it's, it, you know, it's more palatable.
And I know for, I think the ShopC One Stop application, that there was a feedback that was positive right away that said, would you have the ability to accept a grant by June 30th?
So we did, so we did receive some feedback, some immediate feedback on the ShopC application for One Stop. The state has freed up some additional money in that category, in that area. And they identified our application as something that would be eligible for this additional funding. They wanted to know, would we be able to, if we were to get, to get notified of such an award, could we execute a contract before June 30? And, you know, and, and we let them know, yes, you know, we'd be able to move on this as quickly as you'd be able to get us money.
Good.
So, you know, so, so we'll see whether that takes that off the table for us or not and maybe opens us up for, you know, the other application that we did for Flag School.
Could I add one question, Andrew? One thing, Jennifer, that I'm always interested in is it's useful to set priorities. On the other hand, one dimension that's interesting to me is the ease or likelihood of getting money. So if, if in fact it turns out there are things that you look at and say, wow, they're giving everybody who applies for this thing money for it, I'd be interested in thinking seriously about whatever that is. seriously about whatever that is, and if it's not, at least in conflict or distracting, to think about applying for those kind of things as well, just as a matter of getting something that may be longer term or lower priority but still useful for us, and it's easy to apply for, and it's very likely we're going to get it. I'd like to understand what those look like as well. So hopefully, you folks are close enough to that process that you can identify some of those and float them past us and see if there's something that we're interested in, even though it may not be in the top 10 for us or whatever. So if you keep that in mind, that would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I do one more thing, too?
Sure.
So Jennifer, back to flag school. Just to be clear, we've already had the building surveyed by a historic professional, so we know what needs to be done to restore it historically. It's mostly on the outside.
Okay.
The inside's actually in pretty good shape, and we think we've got a pretty good use for that building. So I really like the idea of focusing on that one. And then to expand what Andrew just said, I think all five of us want more sidewalks. So what we ask Capitol to do is not just limit what they come back to us, you know, to the $700,000 that we know we have, but come back with an overall plan of where to put sidewalks in Southborough and then rank where to do it. So we are going to end up with a plan that shows where we want sidewalks every place. So I think that's another good one to focus on, especially maybe with shared streets, complete streets, whatever. But we really do need more sidewalks in this town.
And we have some opportunities with sidewalks where we've got neighborhoods that have good sidewalks, but they aren't connected. So if you can drive a sidewalk between selected neighborhoods, you double the ability for people to walk, you know, linear lengths there. So I think there's some interesting possibilities there, but hopefully would be interesting to grant authorities to say, here's a fairly small investment that you can double the access for these two neighborhoods.
And it's also an opportunity, because I know a point that Mr. Hamilton has made is, you know, over the last several years, we've spent a lot of money in the center of town and improvements right here, and, you know, it sounds like some of the opportunities that you're talking about are ways to make improvements in other areas of the town, not just the center of the town.
It's amazing people actually listen.
We won't make that mistake again, Al. Thanks.
All right. Jennifer, thanks so much, and look forward to the continuing conversation.
Great.
Sounds great. Nice to see you all.
Thank you.
Okay, take care.
Bye bye.
Okay, for the chair's report, I just have a brief report on our Memorial Day celebration. Marguerite, Al and I marched together in the parade. It was spectacular weather, and I thought it was very meaningful, and it felt great to participate. You know, the scouts were out there, and we had a really good attendance. I gave a short speech. The good part was, I think it was a pretty good speech. The bad part was, I think a lot of people didn't even hear it because I did not speak close enough to the microphone. Mr. Purple said, that's what he heard. Some people liked the speech, but he couldn't hear anything that I said.
Everyone said it was great.
Yeah. And Mr. Why Not and Mr. Kalenda did an outstanding job of organizing the annual, you know, tributes to our fallen veterans at the All Wars Memorial and the Old Burial Ground and in the Rural Cemetery. Certainly wanted to recognize them for that. On the chair's report, the next item about the planning board invitation to attend the June 12 meeting, I guess that's been kind of been mooted because now enough people responded that they're interested in attending the meeting that we we either have or will.
Will.
Will post it as a joint meeting. You don't want to speak to that, Sam?
Nope.
Just saw you put up, you're getting ready for your members' report?
I am.
Okay.
Warming up.
I'll turn it over to you for the members' report.
I'm next.
Kathy's next.
Sorry. You're getting ready for the one after Kathy's?
Yes.
Okay.
So what I'm about to say is, I am looking forward to saying this probably more than anything I've said since I've been on the select board. So last Wednesday, remember, May was Mental Health Awareness Week. You know, Sarah Castle came and told us about all the things that her department had planned. Well, culminated in an event last Wednesday night at the community house. And it was, you know, if you remember last Wednesday, it was a food truck night. It was a glorious night. You walk up to the community house, you see the food trucks going, all the families over there. So really, you just looked around and said, you know, this is why we live in Southborough. But Marguerite was there, Sam was there. You know, Marguerite's also on the Youth and Family Services Board. So the the event was to do a lot of things, but it was also to award the Lori Sugarman Woody Award. So Lori used to be the chair of our, the department had before Sarah. Sarah took over after Lori retired. So this award is named after her. And it's name, it's awarded to someone who in the community, spouses, what that department's all about. So we take nominations, and 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 then, you know, people vote, and, you know, whoever gets most votes wins. So the winner this time was very emotional. Her name, Kim Tollander, who died last year in her 30s, on the school committee. And that's who it was awarded to. But I will, I want to also point out Lisa Brachio was nominated. So Lisa was there with with her flowers on. So several people were nominated, but Kim won in memory of her. Her husband was there. The the community house was just beautiful. All this artwork from local people was there, including our own Chief Achilles, who I didn't know was an artist. His watercolors were there. Chelsea Bradway had these beautiful, huge photographs there. So it was just well attended, which our events aren't always, but it was. It was one of the best attended events I've ever been involved in, as far as Youth and Family Services, Marguerite. I mean, they had cello they're playing. It was just really great. But what I wanted to point out is the following. So Kim had a best friend, her name is Lisa De Souza, and Lisa gave the tribute about Kim. And it was truly the most heartfelt, heartwarming thing I think I've ever heard in my life. I had chills literally on my arm the whole time she was talking. She started off with, Kim was my best friend. I just want everybody to know that. She was my best friend, and I want to tell you about Kim. And she just proceeded to talk about what a lovely, warm, proactive, positive person Kim was, and gave a specific examples of stuff that Kim did. So I'm just telling you, by the time I left there, you know, that beautiful community house, I thought, you know, this is why we're in Southborough. So it really was a beautiful way to end Mental Health Awareness Week, so.
Thank you. It was a wonderful event. Just a quick thing, we've, we're going to get more into this later, but I wanted to publicize this a little bit. We've had a couple of resignations from the golf course committee. And anybody out there who is interested in serving on that, great committee. Golf Course, as folks may know, is doing extremely well. There were concerns when we bought the property about, is this going to be a financial drag on the town? In fact, not the case. Each year, it generated more rounds, more revenue than the succeeding year. It's turning out about, I think last year, we got $75,000 or something into the town coffers from the golf course. We're reinvesting that, as people have seen recently. The driveway and parking lot has been paved finally, which is great news. And we're talking about irrigation in the next year or two for the course, which will increase the ability to for people to play longer season there. So all that's great, and a lot of good things happening. The current committee is is doing a great job in terms of improving signage and other conditions on the course. So anybody who's interested in that, I would encourage you to fill out the volunteer form and apply for that position, because I think that's going to be an exciting committee to be part of. So thank you.
And thank you. And who has the, oh, I think that's it for members' reports, right?
I think so.
Okay.
So I just want, before before I start my town to minister, I just want to comment on what Mr. Stivers had said. It seems that the golf committee has gone through cycles. The first iteration of the committee was concerned about making sure that the clubhouse got relocated and the course got reopened and and, you know, put back into play. And then after that happened, you know, the committee kind of dissipated. Second iteration came in, the tee box work, the putting green work, the hitting cages, and and then that kind of faded away. And now you've got some additional tee box work. The paving project happened, and now, you know, there'll be a new iteration of the committee. I think Tony Shoner, you know, as far as I know, is still committed to leading the committee. He's done a nice job. And as as Mr. Stivers alluded to, is having conversations with CPC about the possibility of of looking at an irrigation project, which I think is the last big project. I think, you know, water source, you know, for irrigation may be a piece of that at some point. But, you know, again, the goal was always to get that course back up on its feet and let it succeed or fail on its own, but not because we didn't invest the time and the money into it. So I think everyone has done a great job to this point. Just a couple of items tonight. The first one, it's always nice to have a feel good item. You know, with the employee survey that was done, one of the things that people talked about is is, you know, more, you know, employee things, more recognition things, more, you know, feel good things. I'm not usually in charge of the feel good things. That's usually, you know, Ms. Hale, Ms. Otska and and Ms. Barry in my office trying to put those things together. We have an employee appreciation event on June 20th. We've got the Yulman's Ice Cream Truck coming to the townhouse, and they'll be here between Tuesday, on Tuesday, June 20th, between the hours of noon time and 2:00 PM. Feel free to stop by if you'd like. Can't open it up to everyone, but.
Is there a limit?
This board, is there what?
Is there a limit on number?
Yeah.
Ice cream cups?
Yeah. We'll we'll buy something separate for, you know.
Say the date again.
For the board, June 20th, from 12 to 2:00. We'll be doing that out here in in the parking lot. So I know that it's one of the one of the things that people, you know, one of the events that you put together, people are excited about. So it's it's good to see that. I just, hopefully, the weather cooperates a little bit so that, you know, the weather's not colder than the ice cream. Second issue is, the finance team's been taking a look at our financial policies. I think the last time we really took a deep dive into the financial policies was when we we got our bond rating increased to a triple A. We put some things in place and had the board vote in these policies to that that gave us, checked some of the boxes that we needed in order to to maximize our bond rating. And was having a conversation with Mr. Ballantyne, and he had done a little a little research. And Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, does offer assistance coming in through their Financial Management Resource Bureau to come in and work with communities to update and evaluate your financial policies, and then to work on putting new policies into place. So they'll work with the finance team as well as other town officials, and that we can put together, you know, put together a group to update, enhance, and compile policies for the town. It's about one to three months to do this, and it's a, they tentatively have us penciled in to begin in the fall. And, you know, it it will involve, as I said, members of, you know, not only staff, but probably representatives of Capitol Advisory Select Board, you know, to be involved in this process as well. This would be something that the board would have to approve as new financial policies once this is done. There is no cost for this, and the only thing that they require is a select board vote to approve, you know, approve us moving forward with them. So again, state assistance, no cost, and updated and better financial policies. So if that is something that interests you, then I think that that's something that I'll need a vote of the board to move forward with.
So advisory has been interested in this for a long time, so Andrew Faff is going to be very happy. So make sure advisory knows about it. And this may give us a chance. Remember when the auditor came? You know, we got the draft reviews. And one of the things suggested is taking a look at bonding our OPED liability. It's, you know, interest rates are high now, right? So it may not be the exact right time to do it, but take the arbitrage that you'd get if you had a lower interest rate. So I think that that probably is something they can help us with, as far as I guess. So let's not forget that piece of it, too.
I think that's something we ought to do regardless. In fact, it doesn't cost you anything necessarily, and it can be on the shelf for years when the next interest rate cycle makes.
I think that's something we could talk about at our consent meeting.
Yep.
On my list of long term things, that's one that I had.
Yeah. But again, this sounds like a great idea to get the assistance and get the policies updated, certainly, so.
So are you looking for a vote now?
Well, the state, it's up, if you want to take a vote on this now, that's fine. The state, you know, does require, we do have a, Mr. Ballantyne does have a placeholder for us in the fall, but this would allow them to put it in ink.
So I'm thinking about how we would phrase the the motion here to just move the select board to approve receiving DLS assistance to update financial policies?
Yeah, to, yeah, to have them have them engage with the town to update our financial policies.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Thank you. I'll make sure that they're aware. And the last item I have is, we have not received any feedback, positive, negative, or otherwise, on the gazebo. So unless this board feels differently, I will inform St. Mark's that it is theirs to to deal with. I will make sure that we do get the plaque off of that so that we can find another way to put, you know, to display that.
Thank you. Good.
I just had a couple of emails from people with ideas for for putting it somewhere else, but once it was explained that it would cost more to move it. Yeah, $40,000 to begin with, they sort of said, oh, okay. So.
I think when you actually take a look at it, you take a look at the the size and of the foundation that was built, that it was put on, that is going to be pretty difficult and expensive to replicate somewhere else. Never mind the moving piece of it, just the replication of the foundation.
Right, right. So we'll save the plaque and put it somewhere.
So I think we're down with that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So on the consent agenda, I know I am going to hold F. Does anyone else have any holds on the consent agenda?
B and D.
Are there any other holds on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I move that we approve consent agenda items A, C, and E.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Kathy, you held B.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of what we're doing here. So at the special town meeting on November 1st, 2021, I think it's Article 4, we approved $30,000 to be used toward engineering, consulting, et cetera, for capital type projects. So we've got the $30,000 there that Mr. Melonowski's asking for, and none of it's been used, it's all still sitting there. But to be clear what this is going to do, this is going to fund what I'm going to call, and I think they even called it Phase Two of the review of possibly using a school for something other than a school. We've already done it with Woodward. Woodward is no longer on the table as far as being closed. It is highly unlikely that school is going to be closed. If we close a school, it's going to be Finn. So now the attention is being turned toward Finn. So the focus of this $30,000 is going to be to look at Finn specifically and decide what would have to be done and spent to make that a community center if we close it, and or look at recommending some other place for a community center. So that's what the 30K is going to be spent for, and will take a few months to do. And one question you might say, wait a minute, why, why is, why are we not going to close Woodward? So I just want to explain this to them, because this really hasn't been made, obviously, I don't think publicly. I talked to Jason today, and he agreed that it's okay to talk about it publicly. MSBA came back and said, you can close Woodward if you want to, but we're not going to give you any money toward expanding Neri to make up more, because Woodward's too new. So you're on your own if you close Woodward. We can't stop you, but we're not going to help you as far as replacing Woodward at Neri. Finn doesn't have that problem. And you might say, well, wait a minute, Finn got built about the same time as Woodward. Why would they say Finn's okay and Woodward's not? I mean, that was my question. Well, what I forgot about is Finn was really rebuilt, right? Well, what I forgot about is Finn was really rebuilt, right? And so they went back, they're looking at the original date Finn was built, which is older than Neri. So Finn is okay to close. They're not going to penalize us for closing Finn. Now, what they do want to do is make sure that the town supports this whole project. They want to know that the town is behind what we decide to do, that's very important to them. And they do want to know what we're going to use Finn for. They want it to be used for some type of community purpose. But other than that, they're out of the decision as far as Finn goes. They're not going to give us any money for the community center.
Your mic off.
Sorry. They're not going to give us any money for the community center? Also, I wasted all that, huh?
It was eloquent, though.
Well, Terry must have thought I was okay, or she would have said something.
They must have been another one that-
My mic is on.
Okay. All right, good, good. So anyway, I just want to make sure this is clear, because Al and Marguerite probably don't understand what we're trying to do here as far as that piece of it goes. So this is, again, all about this big project to decide whether we're going to close a school, and then how to, no matter what, how do we have Neri? Okay?
Any other questions? Nope. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda item B?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. You held the executive session minutes from April 21st.
Now, I assume, so I discussed some corrections. So there's no reason not to release these tonight. These are-
Um, hold on. I thought we were holding these, this, for the same, you know, not releasing this for the same reason we did not release other similar ones.
This one to me, I am fine doing that, but this is different. We've already, you know, the contract's done, it's out in public, so I don't think that there's any reason not to do this one, but I'm fine doing it. So we do, we got changes then if we're going to-
Okay, so I have to go back into executive session to make the changes. Okay, so we'll just, we will not act on that.
On the 20th.
And Kathy, you held item E?
No. I just said B and D.
Yep, you held F, Andrew.
You held one of them, Andrew.
Okay. No, I, oh.
F.
Sorry, F. Yeah, I just held F to recognize Jason and Chelsea for this extremely, I thought, very, very generous contribution, very thoughtful donation of thirty-one hundred dollars to basically match, make up for, top off the funding from the CHOT fund to put automated external defibrillators at the town schools. I thought it was extremely generous, and I just wanted to thank Jason and Chelsea for their generosity and thoughtfulness in that regard. And I understand there's going to be some publicity about it from the Recreation Department, the Fire Department, and the Board of Health to let people know about these devices coming to the fields. Anyone else want to speak to that at all?
Just second those comments. Very generous, very important. That's the kind of thing that saves lives, so important.
Absolutely. So I move that we approve consent agenda item F.
Second.
All those in favor? All those against? Motion passes? All right. Next item on the agenda is review of the fiscal year 2024 board and committee appointments. I know this is kind of an iterative process. We've got our most, you should have the most recent, up-to-date version of this on our, on our desk right now. So, does anyone have any comments or questions about this?
I have a general comment.
Okay.
Yes. I, I'm pretty good with, with the individual appointments. What I would like to do is hold the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee and CHOPSY, because we've had at least preliminary discussions around restructuring those committees, and I think that's part of the conversation that would be appropriate for our planning meeting coming up, to decide what we want to do about that. So I would not personally be prepared to vote on appointments for both of those until we sort out if and what we want to do there.
Yeah. So, so the purpose of tonight's was simply to review?
Okay.
So we're not, so that's, so it says review of committee appointments, but there was no intention-
Okay.
-to vote. I wanted to make sure, because we continue to have things coming in. For example, under, I think it's Southborough Scholarship Advisory Committee, we just received a note late this afternoon, probably close to five, that Kathleen Klevich has indicated that she's not seeking reappointment. So again, this is, it's, it's kind of a living document. We've changed this so much. That's why I said, look, don't send out another one, just put it on the table. You know, we'll, we'll go from there. So this is more that if you have questions, if you have, you know, things, answers that you want, so that input, you know, that you just gave in terms of, you know, CHOPSY, Affordable Housing, that's something that, you know, the board absolutely could do. But there, but I just want to point out, there's no intended action for the board to take tonight, this is simply a review.
So on the 20th, we're going to take the action?
That's correct.
And for the people who are listed in yellow, we still have not heard from them as of yet, are we making the effort to just, in addition to, because I know some people are not good about checking their town emails to follow up with them by phone and-
So we're doing that, we're going through the chairs, we're, you know, we're, we're doing everything we can to, to get, and, and people are trickling in.
Yeah, okay.
So as you can see, the yellow is, is limited, you know, not to out people, but, you know, Mr. Rubenstein is on a vacation-
Okay.
-and not reachable, I'm sure he's not looking at his email. Two CPC members, you know, and we're working, you know, to, on those, member of pilot committee, and that's it. So really, we've, you know, I, I want to thank, you know, Melanie, you know, Otska in our office, who's done a great job with the outreach and, and getting ahold of the chairs, and getting ahold of, you know, the individuals themselves and that. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a tough process, it's a little like herding cats, so.
I remember last year, we had a lot more yellow than we do right now.
Yes, you did.
So I think she's done, gotten a lot better. But this also serves, which is going to lead into one or another discussions in a second, the fact that we still have a lot of vacancies on committees. So as we want to form new committees, we should keep in mind what we were told last year, which is we have too many committees, and we've got a lot of vacancies here.
Yeah. I do want to point out to that, to that point, that CHOPSY has requested that the capital planning subcommittee be dissolved. So I think basically they're not seeking for that committee to be reappointed. They do have the report for 21 Highland, and I think that that is something the board will have on a, on a future agenda, but that subcommittee feels that their work is done.
I think there are other committees or candidates for that as well, frankly, so another topic for discussion later.
Okay. I thought this was a useful exercise in highlighting some of the committees where there's really kind of an urgent need to fill vacancies, and definitely, we're going to be losing a lot of institutional knowledge on the Economic Development Committee-
Yeah.
-and also the Golf Course Committee-
Right.
-where we just had some outstanding new people come aboard.
Golf can't meet, golf's just got a chair.
Yep. And the Cable TV Committee, too.
Yeah.
The rest of them, I'm less concerned about where there's just, you know, one vacancy. I think that, you know, the chair can be prevailed upon to try to recruit another good replacement.
Now, is this the same thing I was asking about before? This says FY '23, because they're all expiring on the 30th of?
Should be planning for '24.
It should be, it should be '24, you're correct.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yep. Should be '24.
All right, so we're going to basically table this, and we'll have another more up-to-date version of this at the-
Correct. You will, this will, so this item, you know, this item will show up under consent agenda at the next meeting.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to designate a select board member to serve as the select board representative on the Tricentennial Committee. Do we have any volunteers or people who have a particular interest in serving on this important committee?
Keep looking down the table here.
When does this, when does this committee actually start meeting and planning?
Soon as we have a forum.
Yeah, soon. And this is a, I think this is an exciting committee, it's an opportunity to, you know, work on something very long-term and meaningful. Do either of our two new members have an interest in raising their hand for this committee?
I'd comment that I'm not a good choice for this one, because I was soundly outvoted by proposing a fairly low-key approach to this, that was sort of all-year kind of thing, local-focused, et cetera, no fireworks and parades and that kind of stuff, and got roundly dissed for that, so I think I don't have the right spirit for this one.
Nobody in this historic committee is talking to me right now, so.
All right, Marguerite.
All right, it looks like it.
The news is tightening here.
I know you have a lot, you know, going on with library and-
Yes, I do. I'll see if I, how much I can delegate, that's always good. Right.
So seriously, Marguerite, think about all you've got, and don't do this, because it sounds like you're being drafted. I'll, I'm trying to be the last choice here, but I would do it. I've got quite a bit on my plate, too, though, but I do it. I think you've got a lot, so if you want to do it, do it, but-
I'm afraid I won't be able to do a very good job on it, because I have so many other things going on. Is my, is my concern. On the other hand, I don't want to be a slacker.
I don't think you've got to worry about that.
Okay.
And I take it you think you've probably got too much?
Is it necessary to have a member of the select board on a committee?
Well, in the charge that we approved-
Yeah.
We have a select board representative-
Well, charges can be changed.
They can.
Yeah. And I, I don't think that we, have we filled the, appointed the historical commission?
What does this committee actually involve doing?
Okay.
No, I, I think that's on their agenda to do at a-
Many that year. parade events we're going to do, and how it's going to be celebrated, so it's going to be a lot of work, I think.
Yeah.
And it's going to be a long-term commitment, you know, the 27 is three and a half years away.
Okay. Well, I see a lot of eyes looking at me now, and-
Well, I'm not looking at you for that, I'm looking at you because you're the chair, and you've got to do the discussions. That's the only reason I'm looking at you.
So I, I would be willing to serve as a select board representative on, on this committee, if no one else is interested.
Can you delegate a lot to me? Can you consider me your, like, person to do phone calls and things?
Sure.
Your assistant?
Absolutely. Eyes, eyes and ears.
You can give me lists of things to do, and I will do them. How's that?
Okay. I, I know that, in, you know, in all candor, everyone, it's a shared responsibility here of stepping up to serve on all these different committees. I mean, my thought process here is, I'm going to be, I think it's on the board and committee list here, that I, I'm thinking about stepping off of CHOPSY, and I've asked Mr. Hamilton to be our new select board representative for CHOPSY, and that's on the, the list there. The St. Mark's Street Park Working Group, the three committees that I was on the last fiscal, last fiscal year, the working group, which almost seemed like it was more meetings than the select board.
That's done.
Yeah.
That's done. What's the, what's the third one?
Select Board and then CHOPSY, so I think this would basically just now have it down to two. Does anyone want to nominate me then?
Nominate Mr. Dennington to serve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All those against?
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the review and approval of the committee charge for the old burial ground study committee, and we have a draft of the committee charge in the packet. I first thought it made sense, because I know Mr. Hamilton has been very involved in talking to interested parties about the way to move forward on this, if you would like to give us an update on the discussions you've had and your thoughts on how we move forward.
Thank you. Yes, what I've succeeded in doing is making everybody mad at me, which means I must be making progress. I, I've had a number of discussions with people who would like to see a one-flag policy as sooner rather than later, back now, and I've had a number of discussions with the folks who have been intimately involved with the existing display of Revolutionary War flags, including what I believe we should now refer to as the Hopkins Flag, which is that yellow flag with the snake, and it is legitimately called the Hopkins Flag. Ezek Hopkins was the first Commodore of the first squadron of the Continental Navy, and he flew that flag, and it turns out that the man who paid to have it made stole the idea from a group of Marines. So I think if we could call it the Hopkins Flag, that might ease some of the sting. And by the way, Ezeks Hopkins was from New England. But we are in a situation where, you know, we have two sort of diametrically opposed views of what the right way to proceed is, and that if any decision we make that's precipitous will create a winner and a loser. And, you know, the logical thing to do is to adopt a one-flag policy, and in so doing, we will essentially create losers out of the folks who have put their time and effort into trying to memorialize and have tokens of respect for the Revolutionary War veterans that lie in the old burial ground. And, you know, I spent about an hour and a half in the library earlier this week going through the Old Villagers. And I was struck by a couple of things. I, I'm trying to figure out when those flags first appeared. The earliest I can figure out so far is 2002 is the oldest picture, which Ms. Faniff provided me, but I suspect it may be older, but I can't prove it. And as I read through the Villagers in the eighties, it was very clear to me that Memorial Day was not taken very seriously in town. And that, you know, may have, I'm old enough to remember the Vietnam War and Carter's Iranian debacle, and as I read through, later on in, in the 2000s, there was mention of the increase in attendance at the Memorial Day events. And, but I came across one picture, and it was a picture of Mr. Wynott, and I believe Mr. Faniff, and a number of other people who I didn't know, who are all veterans, who were keeping faith with the veterans who we have rather neglected in the old burial ground. And that, that, that struck me, that, you know, there is a group of people who care deeply about the veterans who lie in the old burial ground, and I think we need to find a solution that does not make losers out of them, and does not make them feel like they have lost something. And my goal in having an old burial ground study committee was to try and craft a proposal where we weren't taking something away from a group which has kept a faith with the veterans who lie in the old burial ground and lie in unmarked graves, and try and come up with a reimagining of the way that our community would show respect for those folks. And I have to say, as, as I walk through the, the old burial ground, it's not in good condition. And that bothers me actually a bit. So that was the intent, is to have a pause, and what I would like, I, I've said publicly, I actually think that the one-flag policy is probably the right way to proceed, but if we're going to do that, I want to have some token of respect that we can say to the folks who have tried to keep faith with those people, that, you know, this is how our community feels today, and, you know, we hope they'll join us in, in that. And that was, so what, before we vote on, what we had discussed was the end of September, I wanted to at least have an outline of an idea of what we could do. And there, there, you know, I've had a few, and some other people have talked to me about ones. I have to say, you know, I, I've had a couple of conversations with the Historic Commission, which does not want to participate, and so if we are to proceed, I think the, the right thing to do is to have a committee of seven people, one of whom is a member of the select board, and six of whom are members of the community, two of whom shall be veterans, which is a minor, minor variation on, on the thing that Mark pulled together for us. You know, I understand that, you know, there are lots of people who are just plain tired of this discussion, and I can, but I, I think, we had a town meeting. The town meeting was abundantly clear about how they felt this, and, you know, so I am reluctant to do an end around, you know, the feelings of town meeting. We did that about a year and a half ago, and it did not redound to the credit of this board. And so I'm trying, I am trying to find a middle ground. I may be on a fool's errand, but I'm just the fool for the, the effort. I'd like to continue to proceed and see if we can make some progress. We may not, but that, that's where, where I stand. So I, I think I would like to change the, the commission to be six members of the, a select, select board member and six members of the community, two of whom shall be veterans, and see if we can make some progress before the 30th of September. I, I know that there are a few people who have expressed interest. They don't necessarily agree with me, but that's fine, I, I got, have no problem with that. And to see if we can reimagine how we show respect for the Revolutionary War veterans that lie under our care.
Does anyone else want to speak to the, kind of the path that we go forward in terms of the committee charge, and then also just the underlying issue here is the, the flag policy, right? So there's the, you know, the charge of the old burial- So there's the, you know, the charge of the old burial ground study committee was a thing of a way to appropriately recognize the Revolutionary War veterans. But then, you know, now that we've seen some other drafts of municipal flag policies, they're kind of a different type of work product. I see, Marguerite, are you?
I'm just, I'm just wondering if we can get Brian Sterns, who's the veteran's agent involved with this? Because he seems to be experienced with making decisions that please the people.
So Brian was involved in preparing, as he said at our last meeting, the flag policies for the towns of Westboro and Hudson, that you might have also seen in the Metro West Daily News on Sunday. The city of Framingham is also addressing this issue right now. So Kathy, do you want to speak to this issue as well?
So Al, thank you truly for jumping headlong into this. Seriously, I'm not joking, seriously. I know this has been hard. So I just want to clarify something. Ms. D'Muria called me after we met last time and clearly had not understood what we did at the last meeting, which is to adopt an interim flag policy and separately agree to form this committee. To me, two different things, right? They can go in parallel, but it's still two different things. So what I would like to see is that on our June 20th meeting, we basically finalize our flag policy. One way or the other, get that, just get it done. We've talked about this for almost two years now, get that piece of it done. As far as this committee goes, this ad hoc committee goes, I'm fine with seven. Seven's going to be hard to get, I can tell you right now. So you might want to think about reducing it to five, just so we can get it going. And maybe, so the Historic Commission has been, in my ear, for about a year about all the things that need to be done in the old burial. It is kind of a mess, right? There's, it needs to be cleaned up. So I already had that on my list for the new DPW superintendent to make sure that we did something toward it. So again, we can just keep that separate or you can broaden this charge to just deal with the old burial ground. This is part of it. And then on top of it, recommend what we should do to respect the whole cemetery and make it what it should be. This beautiful old cemetery in the middle of town. So, but I just fervently hope that on June 20th, we can invite Brian to our meeting and come to an agreement on what we should have as a permanent flag policy from that point on. And then get this ad hoc committee going so we really end up doing exactly what Al's described, respecting the veterans that are buried there, the ones that are in unmarked graves inclusive. But also clean up, clean it up at the same time, so it really is what it should be.
That's something I think of the whole improvements, renovations or cleanup to the old. I think of that as something that's a part of a potential larger project that involves, you know, the town common and also some of the unfinished elements of the St. Marks Street Park, name to be decided soon or shortly. So I think that's a little bit of a different issue, but I think what you're saying is you can move on different tracks. You think that we should have on our agenda for the 20th, and I agree with this, discussion of the flag policy. And we can have some exemplars from other towns, do a little survey of what other communities have and take action on what our flag policy is going to be.
Yes.
Yep. Sam and Marguerite?
Sounds like a good idea.
I agree with that timing. I think that, again, I think Al's suggestion on the committee is a great suggestion. And I think that gives us an opportunity to sort of think about this in a thoughtful way and come up with some good ideas in terms of how we honor the war dead in that burial ground. I think that it's interesting, as the newest member of the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds, I would point out that there are a number of trust funds that actually have a purpose for cemetery maintenance. So I'm not sure if that's limited to the rural cemetery or if that money could be used for some of this work. But I think it is unfortunate that we've let the old burial ground sort of fall into some disrepair there. And it would be great to work to clean that up and make it look like it should look. So I think that's more in our bailiwick and the new DPW superintendent maybe than, I wouldn't clutter the charge for this committee to that unless they have suggestions for that, which would be certainly welcome.
So fair enough.
Fair enough.
I see that Mr. Miller is in the audience. Can we bring him over?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, thanks for bringing me over. I just wanted to express how really quite frustrated and flummoxed I am to have Mr. Hamilton mischaracterized so extremely what I told him just days ago. What I indicated was that on our May 25th meeting of the Historical Commission, days after the Select Board met and passed an interim policy that conflated the issue of the flags with the formation of this commission to look into commemorating the veterans at the old burial ground, that as a courtesy to the Select Board, I filed an amended agenda immediately because I was present at your last meeting. And I wanted to be seen as cooperative and trying to move forward with all speed because I knew our subsequent meeting wasn't going to be until the end of June. I put the matter on the agenda. We discussed it. I indicated my willingness, despite my displeasure at having the issue of the flags in the OBG and the duties of Mr. Why Not, who does not have statutory nor executive authority to make the display that he's making, that in spite of my unhappiness with that and the decision to punt the Select Board taking a position down the road, that I was willing to step forward and serve on that committee. But I indicated to Mr. Hamilton, I thought very clearly that the rest of the Historical Commission had grave reservations, did not want to appoint a second person and urged me not to go forward myself. And I indicated to Mr. Hamilton that the reservation of the Select Board had nothing to do with the charge of the proposed committee or the duties that it would undertake. We enthusiastically support commemorating not only the 27 or 28 unmarked Revolutionary War veterans' graves in the old burial ground, but we further support trying to have some accounting for the nearly 575 civilians who currently lie in unmarked graves in the old burial ground principally due to the Hurricane of 1938 and the immense and unfortunate destruction that occurred at that time. So we think the veterans should be marked and in a very special way. We think the unmarked civilians should also be accounted for in some way. But I indicated to Mr. Hamilton that the issue that the Historical Commission principally had was that we did not feel that such a committee could make productive progress in the current climate without a resolution undertaken by the Select Board to decide the matter of the flags in the old burial ground, one way or another. That we didn't want to be used as a bargaining chip. We didn't find that appropriate. We want to undertake the historical commemoration of the unmarked graves in the old burial ground of veterans and non-veterans. But we don't want to be used as some sort of political tool to cover the decision that the Select Board has to make and that you know you have to make and that the law clearly points you toward making. So, you know, leave the Historical Commission out of this if you'd like, go forward. But the other part of the problem is, at the point that we discussed it last week on the Historical Commission, we did not have the charge because you hadn't made it, you hadn't written it. I had no formal notification. In the last week, I got formal notification from Melanie at the townhouse about the Terson Tenerife Committee. I thanked her very profusely and I said, can that wait until our June 25th meeting? She said yes. I still don't have an official notification of the charge of this proposed old burial ground, you know, commemorative group. And therefore, I have no authority to act on it. I tried to put it in front of my committee as a courtesy to this board.
Kevin? I'd like to just.
I find my position mischaracterized and I really frankly, you know, find it really infuriating. It's not right.
Kevin, I'm sorry, just got a drunk in here.
We're trying to play ball, we're trying to do the right thing. But we have a principled objection to having these two issues co-mingle. And I told Mr. Hamilton that I support the idea and that I myself had had feelings toward trying to do something for the veterans to sort of palliate what, for some of them is a very painful, what they regard as a loss. You know, from my perspective, it's a matter of honoring them in a manner consistent with the treatment of veterans in veterans', you know, federal and government, you know, VA cemeteries, including Arlington National.
Kevin, Kevin, I'm sorry, I'm just going to jump in here. I understand you've let everyone know how you feel. I just have the feel the need to, you know, Mr. Hamilton has done something, I think, extraordinary in coming in right on board to the Select Board and trying to listen to the views of people that have very different perspectives on this. So I just, not getting into, you know.
I agree with that.
Okay, let me finish. Kevin, 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 let me finish, let me finish, let me finish.
I applaud Mr. Hamilton's effort every step of the way and I commend him and I thank him for it. And I don't want that to be lost, but I do not want to be mischaracterized. And I don't like the Historical Commission being portrayed as some kind of obstructionist group that doesn't want to play ball. We do, we believe in the charge, if the charge is actually finally formulated, I believe in the cause of this commission. What I don't believe is conflating, and once again, even as tonight, we're talking about, these are two separate things. The conversation clearly conflates both issues. Solve the one and we will step up and do our.
Kevin, I think you made your point, Mr. Hamilton, you want to speak to this briefly? And?
Well, I apologize if I've offended you because that was not my intent. We have a fundamentally different view of how to resolve the situation. I view this committee as the path to reconciliation. And I've had a number of people who frankly want, you know, if we vote to have a policy one way and it'll probably show up at town meeting again. And I'm trying to avoid that. And so, you know, I view this committee as the path to reconciling two disparate groups. And the participation there is an attempt to do that. Now, I recognize that there are people who simply believe that we need to pass what will almost, will probably be the one flag policy. And then sometime in the future, we will do something else. And I get that, that that's the position. And I just, I view this as the path to reconciliation rather than driving people back into their respective corners, making one side feel like they've been victorious and another side feel like they've lost something that's important to them. And that bothers me a great deal. And so I'm trying to reach consensus. I may, as I said, I may be on a fool's errand. So if I have offended you, I apologize. And if I have mischaracterized, I realize that your position, or rather the position that the Historic Commission has relayed to you and you've relayed to me is that first, we need to pass the flag policy. And then at some future date, we will make good on the need to recognize the veterans. And, or rather to recognize the Revolutionary War veterans. And my feeling is that I want to have a plan in place before, on how we can make that recognition before we go and remove what exists today.
And my perspective on it as the chair and thinking about, you know, our goal-setting meeting for next week where we have some important things that we all want to discuss that are separate from this. This is an issue that has flared up at a kind of regular interval. And I mean, I think one of the things that we just can't avoid is that town meeting can take a vote, but ultimately it really is the Select Board's call. And, you know, you can form a committee that'll make a recommendation. Ultimately, there'll be a discussion before the Select Board about whether to adopt any policy that's proposed. So I just kind of have a sense of how, you know, different people have spoken about this at different times. So just to kind of move forward with the Board's goals for the next fiscal year. That's why I agree with Kathy that we should, we'll put some draft flag policies up for the meeting on the 20th. And we should all reach out to everyone who we know is an interested, you know, stakeholder and has strong views about them, let them know. And we can have this, we're already, we're going to have an interesting meeting on the 20th. And we have our state legislators coming on the 20th. We're going to have the transfer station rules and regulations, the debate about whether to, what we can do about the transfer station fees. But I think that this is an issue that we just got to confront and we will deal with it on the 20th.
I think we're doing what Mr. Miller is suggesting in terms of dealing with the flag.
That is the flow of the overall conversation, that we're going to have a discussion about this on the 20th to address this head on. All right? So I don't think that exacerbating, you know, I understand, Kevin, how strongly you feel. But I really need to come to the defense of Mr. Hamilton because I think he's put in an extraordinary amount of effort trying to bring people together, which is.
Hey, Andrew, with all respect, nobody's denigrating the efforts of Mr. Hamilton. What I'm objecting to is simply the mischaracterization of the position of the Historical.
Yeah, and we've heard what you're saying.
And I resent on behalf of my members, not for myself, but on behalf of my members, some imputation that they don't want to play ball, we're not patriots, we don't want to play along. That's nonsense. We want this committee to be productive and we want to be a productive part of it. A, we haven't gotten the charge yet. B, we wanted clarification.
Well, the charge is in the packet.
And, and that's, we met last week, Andrew. I met last, I brought it up last week as a courtesy.
Kevin, you're really just kind of, yeah. We'd like to move on, thank you.
We should finish our discussion first.
Uh, Ms. D'Muria? Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Debbie D'Muria, 58, Flag Road. Well, I'd like to volunteer to be on the committee. I'd like to represent the hundreds of women and children that are unnamed in the burial ground. I think, and Kathy, you mentioned this.
You're on Microsoft.
I'm not on.
No, she's got to pull it closer.
Oh, sorry. Just to recognize, I think that at the last meeting Kathy mentioned that this is a burial ground that I think it was voted on at the first maybe meeting of town meeting, when the town incorporated. This is not a veterans' burial ground. And I would like to just open your minds to think about a project that's been going on by the Historical Society. I think for a lot of years Sally Waters has committed, I think like a decade, on trying to identify the people who are unnamed in that burial ground. And I believe, of course, there's veterans, 20-something that she mentioned, but they're mostly others. And so I'd like you to think about the charge of that committee to commemorate the people that don't have names somehow. I think she has found a lot of the names because there are church records. But, you know, I don't think that this is only a veterans' thing. I see this as, you know, our town center, this is the jewel of the town. We have knowledge now of so many more burials that don't have names. Only a small fraction of them actually are veterans. We, we have knowledge now of so many more burials that don't have names, only a small fraction of them actually are veterans. So I would like to, you know, volunteer to be on the committee to represent the women and children that are unnamed. And also, I would just ask that, I agree with Marguerite, that Mr. Sterns would be a, a fine pick because he's been involved in other towns. And I would say, yeah, you know, for people who you choose to be on the committee, I would hope that you choose, you know, I'm, I'm looking at this board and I know that there's a veteran on this board. On almost every committee or board that I've served on, there's a veteran on that board. My neighbor is a veteran, there are veterans all over town. I hope that you choose somebody who truly wants to move the ball forward and isn't so closely held and political. And I think that there's a lot of people in town that would really maybe want to join this board. It seems like we always seem to pick the same two people again and again, and that's maybe one of the problems. But I hope that you consider me and I hope that this project can expand so that we don't, we give everybody equal, you know, recognition. Veterans deserve recognition and I just want to mention that I believe Mr. Healy asked the veterans at the, the first hearing in 2021, asked them to come up with a proposal to honor the veterans. And I don't believe they ever did, they were more interested in putting up flags. So I would think that, you know, we can think about the old burial ground in a different way and think about the people who are buried, buried there and how do we honor all of them, a portion of which are the veterans. Thanks.
Okay, so I think the upshot, yes, briefly.
I had anticipated that this would be a narrowly focused group for a specific for a specific charge and for a specific reason as opposed to a, a much broader and, and perfectly legitimate set of considerations. Perhaps it's best if we set aside this idea for the time being until.
That's what I was going to suggest.
And, you know, I'm going to be unwilling to vote in favor of some versions of, of a flag policy on the 20th. If we haven't addressed this in a straightforward way, but I've gone down in flames on many occasions. And so if we're, yeah, I, I think maybe we ought to postpone this and perhaps drop the idea.
Well, I wouldn't give up on dropping the idea, but I just think that, let's address this in a comprehensive way on the 20th.
I think there are two questions here. One is the flag policy, two is care and maintenance of that cemetery. And P.S., the Potter's Field at the south side of town, which has no markers and plenty of people in it who didn't have enough money to be buried in this one, right? So I think that's the issue, but I think the flag policy, the longer we talk about it, the more contentious it's going to become. I think we should move on it at our next meeting and make a decision and vote. Because otherwise, it's just going to be over, it's going to be like picking at a wound.
Okay, I think we know what we're going to do. So the next item on the agenda is the transfer station rules and regulations. Okay. So we are not going to be voting on this because of the rules and regulations by law that Mr. Litt and I worked together on.
A certain member promulgated.
All right, yeah, this is when, when you thought, did you think through the implications of this?
This is poetic justice.
Yeah, it is poetic justice. But there is an important, you know, you saw the red line version of the transfer station rules and regulations, there's only one red line. Change, right, but really, the bigger issue is about setting the sticker price, where there's been a lot of different viewpoints about that. But in advance of the meeting, I asked Mr. Purple to circulate some historical numbers. And basically, what they show is that the gap between the revenue generated from the stickers and the operating price, operating expenses of the transfer station has, the gap has continued to grow and grow and grow and grow. Our increases in the transfer station sticker fees have been fairly modest and irregular. One thing I definitely remember is when Mr. Butler came to the advisory committee and given a pretty comprehensive overview and thinking about, should we, are we going to need a new hopper? And basically, the conclusion from his report was, you know, the South Row Transfer Station is actually working quite well and you have to make a very difficult balance of, don't have the sticker price too high because then it would, you know, if you, once you reduce the number of users, you can go into a downward spiral. So, but I do think that we probably should consider a increase in the transfer station sticker fees. And I'd like to open up for a discussion on that. I had some notes on this that I seem to have misplaced with the numbers, but the, right, the current sticker fee is.
Two sixty.
Two sixty.
Yeah, two sixty. Okay, here it is, so that the the, the best numbers we're able to come with, come up with just in the afternoon preparing for this meeting. The price in 2006 was a hundred dollars and 2009, a hundred and ten dollars, 2018, two fifty, 2022, two sixty. So there's really just been the last like five years, a ten dollar increase. And the projected, or the, the gap as of May 2023 is a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So that's the highest it's ever been.
So can we start with philosophy first?
Yeah.
Then we can talk in detail. So this is, I, I like why we're doing this, let's talk, get everybody's opinion, then we can vote. You know, on the 20th, when you have published your hearing or whatever you're going to publish to meet your bylaw. So I don't ascribe to the philosophy that we should cover all of the costs of the transfer station except for what used to be, I think, a hundred thousand dollars, now it's grown to almost two hundred thousand dollars. I would like to see all of the cost of the operation of the transfer station covered with the sticker fee. Second, I, and I know this one's going to get me in trouble, you know, four out of five people here are seniors, right? So I'm talking to people to my left, not. I don't know why we give a senior an automatic exemption from paying for this. I'm happy to pay for it. I think I'd much rather focus on those that need help financially and there's a mechanism to do that already built into this. I just don't think that seniors automatically should pay zero for the sticker. Now, it doesn't mean I don't think we should, they could, they could get a discount, I could do a discount, like we do the water. We don't give the water away to seniors, but we do a small discount. But remember, we keep talking about how our senior population is growing and growing and growing and growing. So we're going to continue, if we continue on the path we're on, we're going to continue to ask those that aren't seniors to truly subsidize a really big group and I just don't see the need to do that subsidy. If we do the math between now and next meeting, I think we're going to see that if we were to include the seniors in the group that pay for stickers, that the actual sticker price comes down. I'm pretty sure, just doing the math in my head, it's going to come down probably quite a bit. So that's part of it. The other part is kind of trivial, but I don't know why we ask people who happen to have two cars and two people who work and you take turns going to the transfer station and you're busy, why you have to pay extra to get that second sticker. That I don't, it's only ten dollars, so I'm not going to argue too much on that one, but I don't agree with that one philosophically either. So, there you go.
I have a different view.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, first off, I didn't know Andrew was a senior.
No, he's not, I looked to my, I said.
I do have gray hair.
Has some gray hair.
It's getting gray.
I looked to my left, I looked to my left.
Yeah. I think, I, I think you're right. You know, I, I have a private hauler, I use the, the transfer station largely to get rid of yard waste and occasionally, and occasional recycling. Actually, I use the transfer station more for campaigning than anything else, like everybody else here. Now, I, I do think we need to be cognizant of the competitive environment out there and, you know, as we raise rates, you know, it does make the private haulers look more, more and more attractive. And, you know, I guess the other question we ought to ask as a, a larger one is should we have a transfer station at all? This is a service that the private sector perfectly well provides. I mean, a significant fraction of the town have private haulers. Now, that's, that's a much bigger question than, than setting the rate. And maybe that's a conversation we ought to have next week, put it on the, the list of many things to discuss.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to say that I really like the transfer station. I like, I thought the recycling works, works well. I can't get a hauler truck into my yard because of the stone walls, they won't come. So that leaves me out, out of that. I think that costs have gone up because China's not taking our recycling anymore. Everything's more expensive because if something breaks, you can't get the part. So, yes, the cost goes up.
Can you, please turn a little bit closer?
Oh, sorry, anyway, I'm, it's, it's late, so I'm free associating. Anyway, so the other part of it is, Andrew, did you say to me something about it's impossible legally to, to make the transfer station assessment according to need, need-based, other than senior-based?
No, there's actually, and that's one of the things in the, in the rules and regulations, is that there is a need. If you, if you have a demonstrated need, you can apply for a discount.
Waiver.
Because we may have seniors that have more money than any of us could think of.
That was the only red line change that the rules and regulation had to do with that part of it.
Is there any point in waiting until the new DPW head comes in to get his point of view on this?
Because we have to make these effective for July 1st.
Oh, okay. And he can't come and advise us before he starts working here?
It's a little awkward.
A lot to stuff, a lot of stuff to introduce, yeah.
All right. What can I say? The cost has gone up a lot, cost of everything's gone up a lot.
Well, Sam, go ahead.
A few comments. One, I think part of what we've seen historically is that we used to get paid for recycled stuff, a reasonable amount of income from that. And that went away and so that put more financial pressure. I've always been a fan of some subsidy here and the hundred thousand dollars always seemed to me to be a reasonable number that the town subsidizes. I think that as one who spent a sizable amount of time at the transfer station, I, I think that that's actually an important social scene for the town. I can't tell you how many times I see people come in there and say, hey Fred, Sally, it hasn't been, been six months since I've seen you, what's going on with the family? And people interact there socially consistently in ways that I think people find great value from. And so, that's one reason, Al, that I would not be in favor of privatizing.
How do you replace that social thing?
And we don't have enough of those opportunities. So, and I also, I agree with part of what Kathy says, I think that there should be some fee for seniors. My trash costs just as much to dispose of as Andrew's trash. And so, I think that, and, and, you know, people make the argument that seniors, you know, don't have kids in the school system so they deserve some subsidy or whatever. I think you can go down the rabbit hole with that quite a bit, but it seems to me that some structure where, in fact, you try to keep prices competitive or fairly level because I think it's critical that we keep volume up there. And I think we should do a better job of informing people who are new to town through the town clerk's office. I see sort of the one-page handout that says, here are the things you might consider for using the transfer station before you buy a private hauler. I've talked to a number of folks who are relatively new to town who say, I didn't even know about the transfer station. I thought what you do is arrange for private haulers to do it. So the goal for me is to have a net of about a hundred thousand dollars worth of cost on the town. If we had a fee, and I took the numbers out of the spreadsheet and did a little playing with that, but a fee of something like two sixty, which is the current fee. And I like the idea of charging more for the extra sticker, a little bit at least, to cover the cost and, and make, you know, it's a convenience for people and I think there's some value in that. So I, I said two sixty for the sticker, twenty dollars for additional stickers for the non-se seniors, fifty dollars for seniors and ten dollars for additional senior stickers. That comes out to about five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, which is, adds a little bit of margin because I think if we bump the prices up a little bit here, we're going to lose some customers potentially. And so I wound up with about, basically, this net hundred thousand dollar subsidy with those kind of numbers as a reasonable ballpark. So that structure, my model says seniors get a discount with the option to apply for the waiver. I think there are people who will find fifty dollars hardship and I think we ought to be generous about that. And then aim for that balance point where we've got the hundred thousand dollars. So that's sort of where I'm coming out on the direction.
It's an eighty percent discount.
Yep. Versus a hundred today.
I understand. So Al, what do you pay for private hauling these days?
I've got to go and look, I, I, that's my wife's department. We, we, we divide and conquer and paying the bills is her, her department.
Numbers I've heard are like four hundred to six hundred, depending on how.
Yeah, I think that four to six hundred dollars is about, sounds about right.
So it's more, it's more than this?
It's more than this.
More than this, it, it is more, it's, you know, an order of magnitude more convenient. You know, we wheel, we wheel a cart down to the end of our driveway like everybody else does and.
So Sam, you would have no increase in the base sticker price?
Well, effectively, anybody who has more than one sticker will have an increase, but the base stays the same. That would be my thought. So there is a way, if you want to, you know, have a flat fee, you have that choice. But many people do have multiple stickers, so. And again, you know, one person's opinion, but that's sort of what I think would be palatable for people. People will not be happy, seniors would not be happy doing this. On the other hand, I've talked to a lot of seniors who say, yeah, my trash does cost the same amount. I, I'd hope to get a break on this and this is a pretty substantial break, actually, in terms of pricing.
Are there any other numbers that we would want, you know, Mark and his team to run and?
So I just have one clarification on what, on what Sam said. So if it's two sixty for the, for the first permit.
Right.
And you said twenty for.
Twenty for each additional sticker.
Oh, for each, okay, that was my question, each additional.
And then fifty and ten.
Up, up to the, up to the three.
Yeah, fifteen, fifty plus ten for each additional.
Yeah.
So we could do a spreadsheet with starting covering all the cost, okay? Letting seniors pay and then do five or six scenarios. But I, I did want to point out before anyone thinks that all seniors would be opposed to this. Carl Guyer has come to us many times and said, why am I not paying for a sticker? So I don't know what the ratio is as far as what seniors think.
Carl can afford it, though.
Well, I understand that, but there's a lot of seniors that can afford it in this town. So I just don't, I don't know that seniors are in a different economic position than anybody else, is my point. And we've got a mechanism for those that are not able to afford it to, to apply for it.
Seniors and non-se seniors.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Are there any other numbers? So we're going to run the numbers and just cover all the costs. I think we already have.
We have, we have all those numbers, actually, yeah.
Right, so, so if you looked at what I had sent out to you, if you took a look, and again, this, this spreadsheet that I believe.
This is the four o'clock email?
Yeah, this is, yeah, Ms. Galligan.
This was in the packet, but then I asked to then.
But Ms. Galligan had been maintaining, you know, if you wanted to cover everything and continue to basically not be charging seniors anything, you know, your permit fee to cover everything would be about three forty-four, three forty-five.
Yep.
Okay, and then if you wanted to put in a senior rate, you know, it would drop that down. So if you're looking in the vicinity of some of what Mr. Stivers was talking about, it'd be about three twenty-three for, 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 for non-se seniors and about almost fifty dollars for a senior rate. But again, that, that doesn't incorporate costs for the additional permits either. So you can, so again, you can play with this. So I think what would be helpful is if there are different scenarios. We've talked about, I think, two scenarios tonight as to how to do this and we can put this together for you, so you can see it. So if there's other things that you want to see, I don't need them tonight, but over the course of the next couple of days and everything, to give the finance team a chance to work this together.
Well, one would be with the hundred thousand dollar subsidy.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so basically, I, I guess I'd refer that as, to, as the the Dan Kalenda method. I believe it was when Dan was on the board, that was, and, and again, we were talking about pay your throw. But, but that was the issue, the board had said, okay, we agree that we'll keep a hundred thousand on the tax rate, everything else on the, on the permit, permit fee. And we've, we've obviously gotten away from that, you know, with the increase in cost.
With a number as high as three twenty-three, you'll have people dropping off and just say, for another seventy dollars, I can get somebody to haul it. for another seventy dollars, I can get somebody to haul it. So, you'll probably lose people.
You, you, you get back to Mr. Hamilton's point of, you know, should we be doing this? And if you're gonna, if we're going to cover all of our costs and say, this is what it costs for us to do the service, do we end up driving people towards a curbside approach?
Mm-hmm.
Which then eventually-
Driving us out of business.
Drives us out of the business.
And there have been towns that that's happened to. I believe Wayland, um, had that problem.
There's some classic cases, that's right, yeah.
So, did you read John's report when he came back to do the, whether to do the hopper or not?
It was a long time ago, but as I recall, he was gravely concerned about, um, people finding alternative means of disposal that, along the streets.
And, and, I mean, it was his normal John Butler, you know, deep dive. But he also did point out that, um, you know, we've got, these are fixed costs, right? So, we need to encourage, we need more customers. We've got room for a lot more customers, so we should do what you said, which is make sure new people come to town, get a piece of paper saying, we've got this great lovely social gathering that you can go to, um, and, you know, and you can get rid of your, um, trash at the same time. Um, but one thing Sam said, um, is slightly inaccurate as far as the cost go. Not only is recycling not paying us, we're paying recycling now. It's actually, in John's numbers, it was costing more to haul away the recycled stuff, the plastics, than the regular trash. That's how far out of balance it's got.
If we throw it in the pit, it's, cost is less, actually, but that violates state law, so can't do that.
So, I think we've got an idea of where we want to go for the next meeting, right?
So, I, yeah, I've got three, I've got three scenarios. Um, I did tell other members of the finance team to clear their schedules for the twentieth, um, so that-
Oh, this is easy.
So, we can sit here and work this, right, you know, exactly, so.
Philosophy is the huff, tar, hard one, yeah.
The hard part is Andrew getting it posted correctly to abide by his bylaw.
So, I mean, the, the, the bylaw piece is, is pretty easy. It's the fee piece.
I'm just joking.
Is where we're, I know, so.
And this is also kind of continuing a little bit what we were doing with the water rates, right?
Yeah, yeah. And there, the seniors get a discount, but it's, you know, what was it, twenty percent? It's not eighty percent.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, we'll put that together.
The next item on the agenda, um, is really Mr. Stivers.
All right.
So, the reason why I thought that we should put this on the agenda is every time that we've talked about the ARPA committee recommendation to use ARPA funds to purchase the National Grid parcel fifty-four forty, one of the things that always came up was, we, we don't know whether it's a environmentally contaminated parcel, and we looked into whether there's any way we could first do a environmental assessment before making a decision, and then, um, Mark had reached out. You want to speak directly to this?
Uh, yeah, you were, you were almost there.
Okay, yeah.
But, but the, but the, but the point of the matter is, is that we have, again, there was concerns about whether or not, you know, um, through what we've heard or what we may know, whether or not there's any contamination on the parcel from the uses of National Grid ad for the parcel. And, um, we had asked about, uh, doing a, a tabletop of phase-one, um, study, and, um, National Grid kind of was reluctant for that, gave it to their attorneys, and the attorneys came back and said, sure, we're willing to allow you to do that as a condition of a purchase and sale. So, if you don't like the results that you get, you're fully free to walk away. Um, however, if, if, you know, if things come out and everything looks good, then obviously you're moving forward to, you know, consummate the deal. So, um, I, I, you know, in talking with the chair, you know, I think you wanted to put this on the agenda so we could have the conversation, determine once and for all, you know, is this something, and maybe not once and for all, but, you know, do we want to move this, you know, do we want to move this forward? But really with the understanding that we are going to purchase this property if everything comes back as we, as we think it should. Um, the one caveat, um, because, um, one of the board members had asked a question about, you know, if we are using ARPA money, can we just simply go and purchase this? Um, but the funding source no longer is an issue for town meeting, but the disposition or acquisition of property is. So, you still would need a town meeting vote to acquire the property. It's just that you've got the funding source, you've taken that piece off the table. Um, and the only other piece I will add, since you made the mistake to give me the floor, is, um, we talk about purchasing the parcel, right? And we talk about spending, you know, two fifty, two sixty, whatever, whatever it ends up being. Um, but I think that that's only the first part of the picture because we really have not, we've talked about possibilities of what we could use the property for. But again, there's also price tags beyond simply the purchase price to do that. And I think that, you know, um, going into something like this with town meeting for acquisition purposes, town meeting is going to want a little more understanding as to where do we go after the purchase? What are we committing to if we go ahead with this purchase? What are you going to be looking for, you know, to make this property usable? Whether it's for wastewater, whether it's for parking, whether it's for, you know, a playground, you know? How, or, or it's all of those things. Okay, I'm done.
Is this the parcel that's behind the pizza house?
Yes, right. Okay, my turn?
Your turn.
It is challenging in a number of ways. Um, just as a little background, I've been interested in this for a while, as folks know. As Mr. Bennington suggests, every time we've talked about this previously, Ms. Malinowski moves to take money out of my two hundred and fifty thousand dollars ARPA grant. It's now down to two thirty-five, I think. Um, but, um, it's currently assessed at two seventy-six point eight thousand now. It's gone up a little bit this year. Taxes are about a little over four thousand dollars now on it, that they pay on it, so that we would lose that tax revenue. Um, for folks who haven't followed it, this, this is a one-point-six-seven acre parcel behind the House of Pizza. It has a neck on it that goes basically down the driveway there. So, the driveway back to the back of the building is National Grid property. And then, the property itself starts at the back end of the parking lot behind the, uh, House of Pizza and goes down the railroad track behind the houses on School Street there. So, there was a National Grid substation there, apparently. I actually talked to a retired National Grid person, mass electric person, who told me that in the nineteen-sixties or something, the transformers there blew up and caught on fire one day. Created quite a stir in town, but, uh, it, they, then abandoned that substation. So, there was something back there. Hard to know exactly what is in the, in the property itself now. Um, it's unbuildable because there's insufficient frontage there, so not clear how that fits into the assessed value. Um, and it, possible uses, as Mark suggested, are things like parking for Main Street. If we had it, we've got the driveway back there, and, and there's been a lot of conversation from the EDC and others about, uh, finding ways to support the downtown business community with some more parking. Um, not clear what Saint Marx is going to do with their parcel from the old fire station, police station property, but that may draw traffic down there as well, so parking can be interesting for that. Uh, playground is a possibility. Uh, in fact, if there is contamination on the site, there are towns that have paved over those kinds of properties and put rubberized stuff on the asphalt for, used for playground. In fact, uh, Wayland has a nice playground. It's, it's asphalt with rubberized cover on it. Uh, wastewater is another possibility in terms of, again, of, uh, having a waste, small wastewater plant for downtown, for example, that would support business activity there. And, uh, other kinds of gathering areas, uh, for, uh, folks to have, you know, maybe a home for the old gazebo, potentially. Who knows? But those kind of uses and, and, you know, the old adage, they're not making more real estate. So, I think, uh, having access to that kind of property opens the possibility for doing a variety of things downtown that I can't list right now, but, uh, to me, that's an interesting opportunity. So, how do you, how do you go about acquiring it? One, clearly, we could talk seriously with National Grid about a purchase and sale agreement, see if we can agree on a price. Um, I've got to believe that, um, you know, the situation there in terms of possible contamination and unbuildability, um, would have an impact on that price. I don't have any idea what it would be. Um, it has been suggested that, uh, the town could consider taking the property. And if we did that, then that opens the door in terms of the, uh, appraised values and negotiation around that is pretty uncertain. Um, there, you might think about long-term lease, for example, of the property. You know, give us a ninety-nine-year lease on us, on it, and let's see, uh, what we can do with it, if possible. Um, the, the funding, again, as, as Mark and Andrew have said, uh, ARPA money is there. Um, if we needed more funding, we'd have to go to town meeting for that, potentially. Not sure you could get grant money for that. But, um, it seems to me, at least, that it's worth having a more serious discussion with National Grid to figure out what kind of deal could be struck there. And if they come back and say, you know, we want the full assessed value or twice the assessed value, then that creates some real pressure on the deal. Um, are they interested in a lease deal, for example? They're not doing anything with it, and I would be stunned if there was any long-term plans for National Grid for that property. Um, I tried to figure out what they paid for it. The last property sale was in nineteen fifty-one to them, and I couldn't find that record in the Worcester Registry of Deeds. I'm not expert at looking for those things, but, uh, one argument is you go back to that value and say, hey, you guys paid five thousand dollars for it, and you inflate that to current value, and it's worth X as a negotiating point. But, um, you know, again, uh, I would think that they would be eager to get rid of any liability associated with it. So, if we were willing to, you know, assume some of that liability, um, that could, again, create another bargaining point. So, so, again, my theory is that, uh, there are some interesting potential uses. It would be unfortunate to sort of do nothing with it, and, and, uh, if it turns out that they want, you know, a million dollars for it, then it's done and move on. So, we'll see. I, I just don't think that we have, my sense, Mark, is we really haven't negotiated, um, in any specific way at this point, other than we're interested in what do you think, kind of thing.
Right, and, and I think, I think, um, you know, the issue has been, well, we, we can't help you satisfy your curiosity as to the cleanliness of the property outside of the purchase and sale process. So, and, and I, and I think you bring up a good point. Could we do a long-term lease? The question is, what changes would you be allowed to make to the property under that lease?
Yep.
You know, things like that. So, again, we, no, we've not, we've not entered into defined, you know, a serious conversation.
And I've seen long-term leases where it basically have all the rights as if you owned the property. And other long-term leases are very restrictive.
Sure.
You know, it depends on what you can negotiate with those kind of things.
Sure.
So, again, I, uh, you know, I, I guess my interest is in resolving it, uh, at least more clearly, one way or the other. And i- if it, if the deal falls through, you mean, my life goes on. I just think that it's a, an interesting possibility for expanded, uh, activities downtown in a variety of ways, commercial, social, et cetera, residential.
Al?
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I certainly understand National Grid's perspective. Uh, they don't want to know anything more about what went into the ground on that site than is absolutely necessary. Um, if there were transformers on the site and they blew up, um, there's a very high odds that they were PCB-laden.
Something there, yeah.
Yeah, well, PCBs were used, uh, in the cooling fluids in transformers for many, many years, uh, as the Housatonic River in western Massachusetts is laden with them. Um, uh, so, I'd be extremely worried. Uh, this is sort of my, my philosophical thing. We spend an awful lot of money on this strip of land, and we can't build sidewalks in my neighborhood or anyone else's neighborhood, where, you know, we have playgrounds right down the street. So, um, and, you know, I recognize that there is a, a sewer problem or a, a septic system problem in that neighborhood. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure that it's our responsibility to solve it, but, um, I think we got, you know, if we want to make a, an, an offer on the property, uh, we better be very careful about understanding, you know, what's really in the ground there because I, yeah, that could be a nightmare.
I think it's a piece of property in the middle of town, and we should move forward, get it tested, and then move, move on from that. It doesn't, you don't get a piece of property in the middle of town every day.
Kathy?
So, Mr. Stivers, um, first of all, if we're going to do this with ARPA money, we've got to get going here. We're starting to run out of time, so remember the deadline. So, um, we know we've got to take this to town meeting, no matter how it's been funded, so we've got to get it to town meeting. And my guess is Carla is going to say to us that that twenty-four deadline includes having a PNS executed and possibly town meeting approval, um, and then enclose after that. But you got to look, then that, will take a while to get done. Okay, so that's process, right? Um, as far as the piece of land, um, we just approved two million dollars to fund the cleanup of Breakneck Hill. Um, I don't want to end up with a piece of property where we've got what Al just described. We have to know what we're buying, so I would never vote for this unless we absolutely knew what was down there. I don't want to assume any liability from National Grid whatsoever. Um, as far as what to use it for, um, I had a meeting, as, as Andrew and, and Sam and Mark know, uh, with some of the downtown businesses a few months ago. They were mad about how we'd done the paving, um, downtown the day before Thanksgiving. So, as part of that, uh, we talked about what we could do. They talked about how downtown was falling apart. Um, um, one of them was threatening to, to leave downtown. They've been there for decades. Um, and I said, would you guys want us to go forward with buying this piece of land and, um, putting a wastewater treatment plant there? And they absolutely said yes. Um, Morrow's Restaurant pays, they have to have their septic system pumped every eighteen days, and they pay eight or nine hundred dollars a shot at it. So, it's a lot of money for a small restaurant to absorb that cost. But I still think it's a little bit chicken and egg. I wish we had a business that would, came to us and said, look, I want to develop the corner lot, right? Um, the, the, the law of the corner of Newton Street and Main Street, but I, you've got to help me here. I've got to have a wastewater treatment plant. That would make me really sit up and do this. But to buy it and put it in without anybody saying we need it, um, I don't, it's, to me, it's chicken and egg. So, I'm still slightly skeptical. Yes, it is an idea, it's a, you know, in the center of land. Um, I don't know what it's worth. Um, it's landlocked, as, as Sam said, it doesn't have frontage. So, I don't know what a real appraisal would come through and say it's worth. Um, I don't think the praise value means a whole lot as far as this goes.
It's right next to the railroad, so.
Okay, well, I just don't think that the assessed value has a whole lot to do with what it's really worth. I mean, who would, I don't know who would buy it. Um, so I don't know, it's got a lot of worth. Um, so we might be able to convince National Grid that it's really not worth very much. It's not worth them paying four thousand dollars a year and buy it, but I still don't want to buy something that we then end up paying a million dollars to clean up.
Yep.
So, um, but if we're going to do this, we're going to have to get moving here. We're going to have to decide what to do, to go forward. So, we, we've talked about this a lot. Um, and so, I think in a future meeting, we've got to get to society pretty quick.
Which is my interest, that's Fisher.
I don't think we have really talked about it, other than the fact that we wanted to first find out whether or not we could find out what's under the ground, if anything's there first. And then, now, it's not all that surprising that National Grid said, no, you first need to, uh, execute a purchase and sale agreement, which would have a contingency that the town could back out if the results of the, uh, study were unfavorable.
So, I'm happy going that far and, and negotiating and seeing what we can get as far as the price goes, and, and then seeing, you know, if we want to go further, doing the study, um.
Well, if, if we did that, and if we get the, uh, the study on the site, and it comes back and it's found something there, then that gives us at least more data to say, one option is say, sorry, no deal, the risk is too great. Another option is if, you know, it costs us ten thousand dollars to clean it up, some number.
Well, we just won't have that number, that's, I, I just, so.
And then we would have to pay for the cost of doing that.
Well, but then we go back to National Grid and say, you know, the price needs to come down substantially, potentially.
And, or they pay, I just want them to do the cleanup. They pay for the cleanup. So, anyway.
Whatever. But you're right, we don't have sufficient data at this point, and it sounds like the only way to get it is to make an offer.
So, do you have a proposed next step?
Uh, my proposed next step would be to engage more seriously with National Grid to see, you know, what would a PNS look like.
Okay. So, is this something we would put on an executive session to talk about, how to approach that? Or, because it involves an interest in real estate?
I mean, I, I guess I would feel uncomfortable in public session talking about negotiating strategy for acquisition of property. I mean, I think that's an exception to the-
It is, yes.
As I recall.
Yes.
So.
Okay.
And maybe get town council involved in that, because I think he ought to have an opinion on what we should do, not do, in terms of this negotiating process.
So, do we want to add that to the executive session for the twentieth?
We're already having one to do then.
Right.
Yeah, if we can, yeah. Okay, and see if Mr. Tallerman's available.
Sure.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Progress.
Progress, we hope.
All right, we're clocking in now at the ten o'clock mark. Seems like we're doing pretty well so far.
Over and under?
Uh, discussion of boards, June third, uh, our planning session. So, had some discussions with Vanessa and Mark, and what we'd like to do is to have this, I- with Vanessa and Mark, and what we'd like to do is to have this, it's our off-site meeting at the Public Safety Building. Um, and, so it's not like a corporate retreat where you, you know.
Posh settings.
Yeah, we're still, uh, still subject to the open meeting law, and, but our one, our accommodation to have it more collaborative and relaxed will be.
That works well, though, that works well.
We set up the tables in a, um, square rather than like this, and we're gonna bring in some food like we did last time. And, uh, last year, we used a consultant to help kind of facilitate and guide, uh, the discussions, but I think we kind of know the playbook. Um, so what else should I mention about the format? Oh, um, I think that, um, this would be a special meeting, so there wouldn't be any need to have, um, a public comment at the beginning and the end, and it's not required that we have the, um, videotape of it, we could simply just, um.
Public meeting.
Public meeting, if anyone wanted to show up and watch us, we could do that.
Choice is the owl.
Well, I was gonna say, we're gonna be fooling with the owl down there, so.
Yeah, well, um, apparently, if you watch the, I was reminded, if you watch the video of, um.
And go back to the working group.
Oh, no, well, we had many troubles with the owl, but setting aside, if you watch the video of the, of the off-site meeting owl generated from last year, because our facilitator was walking around, and he was walking around, much of the video was just his, or the rear end of our facilitator. So, 'cause he was walking in front of the camera most of the time, so, um, does that make sense to have, we'd have a public meeting, but without owl or Sam?
Yeah, so people would have to come, they can have minutes to look at.
And, um, so there's some categories that, um, Peter Heckenbacher, the consultant from last year, had, and then what I was gonna propose is that, um, everyone takes the time to think about three proposed goals under these headings, and then send them to Vanessa by Monday morning, and then, um, she would have the opportunity to collate them, so if there's, you know, three people have the same goal, she would indicate that.
Three per heading.
Yes, three per heading. Um, let me see if I can, uh, get the headings that we had last time. And as part of this, we'll also look at, um, the goals that we set from last year. I know there's some that I was assigned and made very little progress on. Uh, there's some other ones where we made some pretty good progress, but the ones where we didn't make as much progress are, tend to be like really more difficult, long-term goals. Why is that coming up? Okay, um, come on, I had it right there.
But Mark can send this out.
Yeah, but let, let me get these here. Um, infrastructure, HR, boards, committees, and employees, that's a second. Finance, community development, and that's was where last year a lot of, uh, EDC, uh, affordable housing stuff was under, and, um, administration operations. So those are the four categories. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Can I make some suggestions?
I think I know what you're gonna say, but.
I don't know what I'm gonna say.
Okay, all right. Is it about the number of goals you're allowed to submit?
No, I, I already passed that thought.
We have yours.
I, I got, I, I, I knew I was gonna get shut off, but. Um, it does seem to me, following up on your point about, uh, progress from last year.
All right.
Um, I actually took a quick pass at that, it was pretty interesting, and then I think it'd be worth our individually going through and individually, you know, ranking, you know, what, how we thought we did. I actually used a red, green, yellow bubble thing on it to say, the red ones are ones that I didn't make a lot of progress on, the green ones, pretty substantial, and the yellow, work, still working on, kind of thing. It was a pretty interesting display, and I think it would be useful to get each individual member's, um, uh, feedback on that. Clearly, a couple of folks were not part of that process, so it's, it's limited. But the other side of it, too, for me, is that, um, I think, um, considering, uh, other dimensions, such as, um, um, thinking about things in the context of whether they're, in broad terms, difficult or easy to accomplish, and things that are, you know, very important, less important kind of thing, and thinking about a grid structure to array these things in, to say, these are easy to, to do, and sort of near-term hits, and these are expensive, long-term kind of things up here, to sort of organize the, the set of goals that we have, to think about, uh, how you want to prioritize out of that, because it seems to me that, that coming out of this, this time, maybe we come up with a, a shorter list of things where we have tighter focus on stuff. Last year, we had twenty-eight.
Yeah.
We got some things done, but I think there are probably some things in hindsight that, uh, maybe we could have done better on if we had more people focusing on things, a smaller number of things. And I don't quite know what the right answer there is, but I think that's an interesting conversation to have. Uh, I'd be happier really doing a bang-up job on one critically important thing than doing reasonable progress on, you know, ten others that are less important. And I don't quite know how to balance that, but I think that's an interesting conversation.
Well, that's why I thought of just three, and then there'll be overlap, so I thought, you know, five becomes, I think that's what we did last year, maybe it was five, and I thought that was too much, and.
Yeah.
Um, but I do think it makes sense to have, you know, think of some moonshot goals under.
Yep.
One or two different categories, 'cause I already started to flesh out what mine are, and all, most of them are just completing things.
Yep.
That are already halfway underway, or.
Yep, which is, which is important, certainly.
Very important.
Yeah, you gotta finish. But also, you're right, you have to think big thoughts about some things that are, you know, long-term, but, uh.
Yep.
Very, very impactful if we can get them done.
And, and another reason to keep it kind of more focused is there'll be some unanticipated event that happens over the next year that consumes a lot of time. We just don't know what it is right now.
Yep, yep.
Can I say that the sidewalks and the road being paved have, have been transformative in the last three months of what this town looks like downtown? It's amazing, it looks really, really.
By the fall, so much is gonna be done as far as this part goes. So I am, I, I think, Sam, that makes sense. Um, I don't want to spend too much time on analyzing the goals from last year. I would want to analyze them because some of those probably should be carried forward if they didn't get done.
Right, yeah.
But I don't want to spend a lot of that meeting talking about, you know.
No.
How well you did on this. I just would, want to look and say, okay, um, these got done, these didn't, and these should be carried forward.
But, and I, I agree with you, I don't think you, you look back too much, but I think it, it's interesting to sort of see, you know, how we did, and maybe there's a message in there about, gee, why did we do so well on these things, and why didn't we do so well on these other things, and can we learn from that going forward?
All right. Last item on the agenda is public comment.
Anybody left in the audience?
We've horned him out.
Two.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second, second, third.[1773.13]